Recording. Good evening, everyone. You could just take a seat. We'll get going. Welcome, everyone. This is a special meeting of the New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission. Tonight is February 20th, Tuesday night, February 20th. It's a special meeting on the continuation of one of the applications we've heard previously for 377 North Wilton Road. Let me just read out the the actual application information and then we'll jump right in. And Mr. Green is here. This is a continuation of the 377 North Wilton Road Meeting Discussion and Consideration of the Request of Stephen A. Finn, Wolfsey Rosen, Westkin, Kurianski, LLP Authorized Agent for Saint Luke's Foundation Incorporated owners for a zoning regulation amendment to the New Canaan zoning regulations dated June 16th, 2007, revised November 10th, 2023, to amend Section 3.7.8.2, to add Section 3.7.8.2. F, "Single-level parking structures primarily used for parking passenger vehicles constructed underneath areas that are maintained as open space or athletic fields where the visual impact is mitigated by site design and the surrounding topography." Second part of the application. It's a special permit modification. Upon application of Stephen A. Finn, Wolfsey Rosen, Westkin, and Kurianski LLP, Authorized Agent for Saint Luke's Foundation Incorporated owners for a site plan and special permit modification of Sections 8.2. B, 6.4. G, and 3.7.2, 3.7. E.2. F, "to allow construction of a surface-level parking garage directly beneath an existing artificial turf football field, which will be renovated and elevated in the four-acre zone at 377 North Wilton Road, MAP 40, Block 105, Lot 12, 90, and 135."
Do you want to do the roll call first?
Sure. Why don't we go through that? Chris, there is your volume on. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Roll call here. Dan Radman present, Kristin Nielsen.
Present.
Kent Turner.
Here.
Art Casavant.
Here.
John Cris.
Here.
Chris Herring. He's not here. John Engel.
Here.
Paul Knag is recused. Alan Swirlo. Tom Benton is not here. Christina Larson. And Eric Knowles is joining us next week. So we have a quorum. We can jump right in. Few things. There was a Wetlands hearing on this application specifically with testimony by a Mr. Tian. Did everyone on the commission watch that hearing from Wetlands and see everything, see and hear everything that was said?
Yes.
It's an acknowledgement from everyone on the commission. Mr. Green, you you had outlined a a list of presenters here for tonight, assuming about an hour and a half or so for the presentation. What I'd like to just remind you and everyone in the audience of, there was already testimony by Mr. Trinkus. So at the previous meeting. So unless there's new testimony or new information that Mr. Trinkus is going to be providing, I don't think we need to hear from him again. Secondly, miss the testimony from Mr. Tian. As we all acknowledge, we've all seen the testimony he gave to the Wetlands Commission. We're fully aware of it and understand what his presentation was. If there's something different or new from his presentation from Wetlands, then he's welcome to speak. Otherwise, we don't want to clog up the pipeline, so to speak. Additionally, the we want to make clear that this is specifically about the environmental intervention, right? Because you are intervenors specifically on the topic of environmental impact. Not necessarily anything to do with lighting or parking lots or tennis courts or other parking on the property. Is that correct?
That is not my understanding.
So you're intervenors for all of the above noted issues?
We are probably intervenors on just for the record.
Yes, state your name and so on.
Yeah. For the record, Joel Green representing the petitioning intervenors, well, the petitioning intervenor, Sarah Pierce. We will, we propose to present on our petition, but I also have comments on the plan as well. And I would ask the commission to accept those in the context of either the petition or in the context of the public hearing as public comment.
Either way. Now, we've already heard from the public on a host of topics prior to your input as intervenors.
Oh, I understand that.
So are you going to be giving us anything different than what the intervener, than the general public has already talked to us about in terms of concerns of parking and and lighting and everything else?
Yes.
That's fine. We'll hear from your side. Bring your consultants up. Let's get this presentation underway and then at the conclusion of it, we'll hear from Ms. Culpett, our town engineer.
So I did not bring my team forward. I didn't know whether the applicant, the applicant had presented some new materials and had submitted them on Friday. I don't know whether the applicant had intended to introduce those materials to the commission.
They do not.
Okay. I can just, you can just set up shop here for a moment.
Is Mr. Finn joining us online?
He's on Zoom, yes.
He is, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I am here for the record.
Thank you.
Steve Finn.
Once again, for the record, my name is Joel Green. I practice law on Bridge Board with the offices of Green and Gross, and it's my pleasure to appear before the commission this evening on behalf of Will and Sarah Pierce. With me tonight is my colleague, Linda Williams.
Good evening.
For the first order of business, Mr. Chairman, I am submitting the commission a second amended petition to intervene. And the only revision here relates to the new materials which were submitted by the applicant wherein the applicant indicated, among other changes, that it was using a virgin rubber material as its infill. And so what we did was we revised our petition to just account for that change. And I just revised it from crumb rubber to a reference to referencing the virgin rubber infill material. So I'll submit those to the commission. I do, not knowing if it was going to be weird. Your copies for the commission.
Mr. Chairman, if I may pose a final question to you, Mr. Green. You use the term crumb rubber and virgin rubber. Could you precisely define what you mean by those two terms? So we can all understand, so at least I can understand.
Thank you. Yes, that's a great question. So what we've learned is that different manufacturers and different installers of turf fields use different infill materials. And there's a variety of technologies that are used. And crumb rubber refers to specifically tires which are ground down into into small rubber bruns. And there's been some, the applicant has tried to draw a distinction to something called a virgin rubber material, which does not come from tires, but is specifically manufactured for the purposes of being infill. So it's virgin rubber. It's not not a rubber that's been used in another application of repurpose. And what we will demonstrate tonight is that the concerns that we've raised and the concerns that you heard in the video from Dr. Tian don't change at all by virtue of use of this other material.
Further on that, sir, most are familiar with natural rubber, you know, cap trees. It's done. And I know a virgin, a natural rubber is used in airplane tires because from the material science perspective, as I understand it, it ha, it holds up better under high heat. And when a plane's landing and it makes contact with the runway, it's, it's a lot of heat is generated, friction. And it just does better than the, I'm going to call it synthetic rubber, which I guess Mr. Goodyear invented a number of years ago. So if I understand it, you're not dealing with natural rubber that comes from trees. But the rubber would be the same rubber that would be used in tires, but just was never used for tires. Is that what you're suggesting, Mr. Green?
I, I am going to, I am not an expert on this. That is my understanding, however. We have the fortunately, Dr. Tian can join us briefly tonight and he may be able to address that.
Thank you, sir. Come down with, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sure.
So thank you. So so we'll first begin tonight by addressing the petition intervened. And in response to the chair's question, I'm not going to go over a lot of the material that the public brought for in public comment at the last session. And I'm going to try to move this forward quickly and efficiently. But what I would propose to do is offer the consultants we have on the petition intervene. I will be asking Mr. Trinkus some questions that don't relate directly to the petition intervene, but relate to engineering concerns that are separate and apart from the environmental concerns raised in the petition intervene. And I would propose to address the site plan, special permit, and the text amendment briefly, not tremendously. But there are some important issues and some important in my view, areas in which it does not comply with the zoning regulations that I'd like to bring to the commission's attention that the public may not be aware of generally.
That's fine.
I'll move it right along.
I would just like to caution, if you're going to be engaging Mr. Trinkus for additional engineering input, I'd like it to focus on the intervening document and the environmental impact.
Sure. And, you know, interestingly, I want to just address the petition intervened briefly because staff had provided some guidance to the commission at the beginning of our presentation at the last hearing and sort of talked about what the the chair has touched on and suggested that we not get into wetlands issues because that's not directly in the jurisdiction of this commission. And but what I'd like to do is just expand on that a little bit because among the considerations that this commission and this, I think, would bolster our position on offering some evidence on the special permit because one of the factors that the commission has to consider in considering this application is set forth in 8.2E of the zoning regulations. And one of your considerations is environmental protection and conservation in assessing the special permit. Specifically, that section says "appropriate consideration shall be given to the protection, preservation, and/or enhancement of natural, scenic, historic, and unique resources, including where appropriate the use of conservation restrictions to protect and permanently preserve nature, natural, scenic, historic, or unique features which enhance the character and environment of the area." So this, so much of what we're raising in this intervention goes directly to the jurisdiction of the commission in ruling on the special permit. I just wanted to get that into the record.
But to be clear, you understand that we're tied to whatever the Wetlands Commission ruling is on the impact on the wetlands.
Well, so under the Wetlands Act, the Wetlands Commission, you are correct, acts as an arm basically of deep in protecting wetlands and watercourses. However, its jurisdiction is limited to wetland areas and watercourses, whereas the jurisdiction of this commission is much broader in terms of Section 8.2. So.
Understood, but your whole argument is based on the fact that this project is having an impact on the wetlands adjacent to the property.
Not completely.
And the water course.
No, not completely. Our argument is that by virtue of the compounds that are being discharged from this field, and this is on the environmental issues, that these compounds are being discharged into the ground and into the groundwater. And the reason that so many people are showing up on this application is because, if I'm correct, many of them have wells and many of them draw their drinking water from the area. And the compounds that we are talking about, including these PFAs and other compounds that Dr. Tian will talk about, leach into the ground and find their way into the groundwater and find their way into wells. And that certainly that groundwater issue relates to inland wetlands, but that's a broader area. So and so in the amended petition intervene, and I just want to reiterate, there's two, two points that we're getting to. And one is sort of the composition in the issue with turf fields. And the other relates to the allegation set forth in paragraph five, where I speak to, we speak to the fact that as part of the operation of the school, the school is directing and parking motor vehicles on the tennis court. And I had produced drawings or actually photographs that show, and the applicant conceded in its opening presentation that upwards of 80 cars park in the, on the tennis court. They direct cars to park on the tennis court.
But again, Mr. Mr. Green, the tennis court is not part of the discussion for this particular application for a parking structure with a turf field on it. It's ancillary to it, but that's a whole different topic. And what impact it might or might not have.
Well, I would suggest that it's as part of this application, and while this construction is ongoing, the applicant has not indicated that it wasn't going to, as part of this plan, continue to use the tennis court. And the applicant went to great lengths to point out that one of the benefits it claimed by virtue of creating this parking structure is that the metals and the oils and petroleum products that come off cars and the grit in the sand would be less exposed to the elements, would produce less of an impact. And our point is that during this project, they're proposing to continue to use the tennis courts, even though that was never permitted by this commission. And that the applicant is just on its own, by its own determination, and in violation of your zoning regulations and in violation of the specific permits that this commission issued in 2013 and 2017, decided that it's okay to park cars on the tennis court. And there, there's a record certainly that that is going on. There's a record that that's going to continue apparently because the applicant would say that because it's enrolled so many students, it has to continue to park cars there. And again, if you read the language in the petition intervened and the language that Ms. Carey cited, it's activities that impair the public trust in the air, water, and natural resources. So I think that's an easy step in terms of activity that pollutes because everyone knows that these pollutants are coming off of cars and ending up untreated in the ground. And once again, to the consternation of all these neighbors into the groundwater. So I just, I'm just putting that out there for the moment. So when we broke at the last hearing, we had talked about listening to the testimony of Dr. Tian. And as I understand it, he was going to log in. Are you? I don't know whether you can see whether he's on. So if he can, there he is. Good evening, Dr. Tian.
Hello, good evening.
So once again, if you could just briefly indicate your education, training, and experience for the benefit of the public in the commission, just very briefly.
Sure. I am currently assistant professor at Northeastern University at Boston. I got my PhD degree in environmental science and engineering from UNC Chapel Hill. And my expertise is mostly in environmental chemistry.
All right. And I had asked at my request, did you review the supplemental materials that were submitted by the applicant this past Friday?
Yes.
And can you just comment for the commission on whether the materials and specifically the use of the proposed virgin rubber or EPDM in any way changes the opinion that you offered in the course of your testimony before the inland wetlands commission?
I would say mostly not because this is a type of, still a type of rubber. It's different from the styrene built in, which is the common tire rubber. But according to what I read from the report, they only tested for the metals, so like zinc and copper and all this. But what we were talking about, the concerns that's can be, you know, like leached down to the wetland, the more like on the organic side, organic contaminants were not discussed. So I would still say there's a potential risk for contamination.
And there was a question asked by a member of the commission, Commissioner Cris asked a question. Are you familiar with, and can you just describe the the rubber material that we're talking about briefly?
Sure. So I am more familiar with the tire rubber. Okay, so I heard about the discussion on natural rubber, which is totally correct because when you are comparing the rubber components used in truck versus the cars, truck in general have more natural rubber, but less styrene built in, SPR. But for cars, generally more SPR. And I don't think either of them use the EPDM. But EPDM is a typically, you know, used for things like tubing, seals, and others. So I'm less familiar with the EPDM, but I have searched some articles and you can see similar anti, you know, antioxidant like TMQ and some other plasticizers that's typically used in tire are also found in EPDM. So that's the concern.
And are those the same compounds that the same compounds that you identified in would leach out of those materials under similar conditions?
Not necessarily the same, but there are overlapping.
Can you just expand on that a little bit?
Sure. Like, for example, what I just said, like TMQ, right? So that's one of the antioxidant. It's in there in the literature that I searched. But the nest, you know, the the exact chemicals, right, like things like bifenol guanidine, things like 650. I do not see a very clear evidence it's in there or not because people have not tested those things at all. But it's, it's just a possibility.
Okay. I don't know if the commission has questions.
Commissioner Swirlo, just for my edification, EPDM, is it the same you, as used in roofing material?
Yes.
Well, no, I'm asking it. Can you acknowledge whether it's the same EPDM used in roofing material?
That's a question to Mr. Tian.
I, I believe so, but I'm not totally sure because I need to see another document about the roofing material, then I can be sure.
Well, the EPDM is a common material used in roofing material. So I'm surprised that you, you don't have an answer to that.
Yeah, considering it's covering probably 75% of the commercial roofs in the world.
Yes.
Okay. I have a question for Mr. Tian. I listened to your testimony at the Wetlands Commission. About three quarters of the way through your testimony, one of the Wetlands commissioners asked you, is there a way to treat, verbatim, is there a way to treat the contaminants that are coming off of the turf field? And your answer was yes. You can put in a rain garden or a bio swell. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Tian.
Sure.
Mr. Tian, at the Inland Wetlands Commission, you testified that your your research indicated that crumb rubber coming from tires were impacting Coho salmon in Washington State. Is that correct?
Specifically, that's from tire rubber.
Tire rubber, right? So your, your study did not research EPDM impact on Coho, Coho salmon, correct?
That's correct.
All right. In addition, I think you testified at the Inland Wetlands Commission hearing that your research didn't find any impact of chrome rubber on Atlantic salmon. Is that correct?
That's not my research. That's others.
Okay, but there is research out there indicating that crumb rubber has no negative impact on Atlantic salmon, correct?
Not correct. People only tested a few chemical that we found are toxic to Coho, not the whole tire leachage, right? And they tested those chemicals to Atlantic salmon in Norway, and they didn't find negative effect.
So they didn't find negative effect. Okay, thank you.
From those chemicals.
Understood, understood. And lastly, you testified that your research doesn't support any negative impact of crumb rubber on amphibious life that might be in a wetland or watercourse located in Connecticut. Is that right?
That's not correct. I think the better answer is I don't know because I haven't tested anything on amphibious.
Okay. Thank you. You don't know that, you don't know the answer to that question. Is that right?
Yes, I have to test something, then I can make a conclusion.
Right, okay. And so similarly, you haven't tested anything about EPDM either.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, I have no more questions.
Missioners, anything additional? Mr. Green, continue.
Yeah, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Are we, is it a question for us on the, whether the there's an environmental impact or is that for, on the water quality? Or is that a question for inland wetlands? I know you asked a question, but I don't know where we ended up on that. Is, does the attorney, does Mr. Green get to basically make the argument in front of inland wetlands that there's an impact to water and to us? Or are we asking us a different question?
I think you, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong. We're, we're being asked a different question. We're being asked whether there's an environmental impact to areas other than the wetlands. We have to defer to and look to the Wetlands Commission for their ruling and determination on impact of wetlands as well as water quality. There's, there's an, another issue, which is, if you want to describe this, the, the the taxing district for the reservoir has gotten involved, right, in terms of the water quality? There's, there's a portion of a report that's due for There's, there's a portion of a report that's due for inland wetlands on that.
So I'm just gonna paraphrase.
Yeah.
So inland wetlands is evaluating if this activity is going to have a negative impact on the wetlands or water courses in the area.
Right.
We are evaluating through a special permit. If, just in general, for all special permits, we evaluate if there's some sort of negative impact to the public's health, safety and the environment, very vague. So, you know, the environment includes more than just wetlands. And so having the intervenors, they're now trying to prove to the commission that this activity is going to have a negative impact on either the soil, land, air or water. And so we don't necessarily have the final say over water quality. That is the state of Connecticut's Department of Health, but that is something that you can evaluate as you make your decision on a special permit.
And we can't vote and rule on this application until we get a conclusive determination from the Wetlands Commission as to the impact.
Yes.
I think if it's not, I think it's whether the Wetlands Commission determines to grant a permit or not.
Yes, so if they determine there's a negative impact on the wetlands, they won't grant.
Right.
So I just urge the commission, you, and I would consult with the town attorney on this. But the burden on the intervener isn't simply, you have to prove pollution or not pollution. Part of it is that the conduct has the effect, and it uses the words unreasonably polluting, impairing or destroying the public trust in the air, water or other natural resources. So part of this is the impact on the public trust in those resources. And so my, you heard Dr. Tian's testimony for the inland wetlands commission. And the compounds that he talked about that are released or discharged from these products. And tonight, you heard his testimony, and I know you still here, if you have further questions on it, that similar products are discharged from that material. And I think that's the point, and we're gonna hear from George Logan in a moment on sort of connecting all of that up. But the point is, the only evidence of record in this proceeding right now, this application for the commission, are that these compounds come off or discharged from this rubber material. And it's not a matter of immediately proving, for example, necessarily directly proving at this moment human health impacts or that sort of thing. But that there are compounds coming out of this material and going into the ground and into the groundwater. I think that's the big point. And I would suggest, and the reason that this room is full of neighbors is because they're nervous about the groundwater, they're nervous about their drinking water. And it's certainly impacted their trust. And that's, that's just the point I wanted to make, but we'll connect the dots with Mr. Logan. So I think this is a good moment, George. So this is George Logan, and he has, we've submitted his CV, his resumes in the records. And, but if you would just very briefly, for the benefit of the public, describe your
Sure.
education, training and experience. Let me set some things up here in the moment.
Sure.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is George Logan, I'm the principal environmental scientist with Three Mycological Services. I hold a master's degree in natural resources science at the University of Rhode Island. And I certify, have several certifications of the ones that probably are probably more important here. I'm a registered soil scientist, and I'm also a certified scenery ecologist through the Ecological Society of America. So
Hang on one second, Sarah, Sarah, are those mics working?
No, so it's just these two.
So you'll just have to speak up a little, because these two blue light ones are what's, yeah, that one's inactive.
Just for recording, yep.
It's just for looks.
Just for looks.
Secretified.
It'll work one day, I promise.
Okay, I'll try to project as much as possible. So what I like to do is to sort of, like Attorney Green said, is kind of connect some of these things. And one of the things that I noticed that was a question from the chairman to us was, or maybe it was, well, it was a question regarding, what could we do to make sure that the water quality, whether it's surface or groundwater, because obviously those things are connected? Could be robust enough in as far as what we're doing on this project in order that we can ensure ourselves that there's not going to be a significant impact to these natural resources? And the thing that was suggested was a bioretention area or bioswale. And I would have hoped that the applicant would have figured this out. Because there is evidence out there, and there's robust evidence from the scientific literature that the compounds that they're dealing with have the potential to affect the environment. And I can get into a little bit of the badness from, from my perspective. But what could have happened here that would have been, probably would have helped a lot of people in this audience to feel, okay, we're, they're doing something to protect this, is to have a robust stormwater management system. I'm looking at it from the perspective of what something like that would do to benefit the environment. And Mr. Trent House, he looks at it from an engineering perspective. So understand that. So I'm going to talk about water quality, obviously, and what could possibly could have happened in order to protect the environment and why. And again, I'm proposing that there should have been a robust stormwater management system that would have the ability to suppress the storm and uptake these compounds that we're all concerned about. Now, I know there's been a lot of discussion that has been had about chrome rubber. And now we have transitioned to EPDM. And everyone, including myself at first, before I started looking at the literature, said, okay, that's, that's maybe a good thing. And then I started looking into it and found out that it's a mixed bag. Meaning, from, in some respects, it's, it's much better. It does not, these, the chrome rubber releases different chemicals. BPDM releases others, and in many respects, they're lower. But as you deal with the literature, what you find out and is that we still have a concern about zinc and some other of the other metals. And zinc has been a focus to us, because zinc is a toxic metal to the environment, whether it's soil or water. So one of the things that I did, there's a, and I'll, I'll give this little article here. And I have, I think, several copies enough for everyone. So that I can show you that there's a big question mark in, in my mind, in the scientific literature about the specific product that the applicant has proposed. And as you, you might have seen already, they, they gave some information of what this is all about. Who produces it, the particular company, what it's called, and also some, a couple of laboratory testing on heavy metals and other potential contaminants. And so I looked around and found out that someone had, someone, a few people had done specific tests on this particular product, the exact same product, same name, and you'll see it here. And I, there's other articles, but I figured this was probably the best one. So because it's local, this is called the Toxic Use Reduction Institute. It's from UMass Lowell, so it's, it's local. And they actually looked at this, the title of this is Sports Turf Alternative Assessment Preliminary Results, Chemicals and Alternative Synthetic Infills PDF. So I'll keep wanting, give the rest to the, okay, thanks. And I'm just going to quote a couple of things, I'll wait until you get a particular article. And what you will discover is that, the bottom line is that when this compound or this particular product is synthesized or produced, there's a variability of what goes into it. So you'll see that what the applicant has produced as far as the laboratory results differ drastically from a testing of the same product just a few years prior. Now, have they changed the procedure? Perhaps, but I think what I, what I'm understanding from the literature is that when this particular compound is produced, it's synthetic rubber, that there's a variability on how it's produced. And therefore, sometimes there's more of something and less of something else. So the variability is the problem. If we knew for sure that this compound would only have these parameters, then we will be good. But from what I'm seeing from the literature, we do have some variability. So if you look at this one, and what I've tried to do is highlight at some of these quotations. Now, the particular product that we're talking about is, if you turn the page at the bottom of that table, it starts on the first page, you see the last row, it says PT, I guess II, PlaySafe sixty-five EPDM infill, this is the product. And so they talk about that through this article. And testings were done by this particular product, because this product is not only sold in the United States, but it's sold in Europe also. And the Europeans or partners there, if you will, looked at the findings and found out, among other things, the second highlight, the study found that the EPDM rubber contained more chromium than the recycled rubber tires. Similar amounts of zinc, lower concentrations of AH, phthalates and phenols. PCBs were, which were found in one sample of recycled rubber, were not found in EPDM. So the issue again, and we didn't even focus on chromium, which is toxic in some forms. But zinc is still there. And if you peruse through this and maybe go to page four. Again, and by the way, it says there, TTI, ENF one testing. And this is Target Technology International, is the same, same people that we're talking about here from the product that was produced for us to look at. And, and that bigger highlight, it says, all the chemicals except zinc are shown to be below the sample detection limit for this test. Although the sample detection limit is relatively high, and then it has some other things there that they questioned. But again, the issue is zinc, potentially chromium. And as you know, or you probably understand, zinc is, can be found in several forms. And one of them is soluble, and it can travel. So my report, and I'm not going to go into too many too much detail, just want to highlight a few things. See the similarities that we have between the chrome, the EPDM and also the chrome rubber. That we're really dealing with something very similar, so our concerns are, are similar. So in my report, I talked about the fact that I went up there, did some water quality testing. It's neither here nor there, as far as we're concerned. I did mention the fact that we do have a public order supply that's below us, that all this order is heading to. And that's important. Another thing that might be not necessarily a wetlands issue, because wetlands, the wetlands commission does not necessarily look at wildlife, to look at the habitat for the wildlife, but they don't regulate wildlife. Is that we have a listed species, we don't know exactly what it is, but probably will be told by the next wetlands commission. It could be a wetland species, it could not be, it could be an aquatic or not. But we have a natural diversity database in the water course that leads the site down gradient going towards the reservoir. So the water that's coming in above, you know, where the synthetic field will be situated. So is, is very good, there was, there was no zinc. Could be had, and the parameters were all very good, indicated very good water quality, class A. Definitely, you have a groundwater class AA here. But one of the things that I found in this, I think it's a corollary, is that the Connecticut DEP, back in twenty twenty-ten, did a study, because their stormwater quality manual at that time, which by the way, it's gonna be, there's a new one that's coming out next month, did not specifically address synthetic fields. So they went out and did their own study, and of course, they focused on chrome rubber, because that's what most people were using at that time. But again, it was similarities here. And what they said is that based on the Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual, there's no, not special water quality treatment requirements for synthetic turf fields, that's what the applicant said. So because of that, they said, well, you know, we, we, we've given a pass, we don't have to do anything for the synthetic field. However, what the DEP said in their final report, artificial turf study, leachate and stormwater characteristics said zinc concentrations in the runoff from artificial turf fields are consistent with those associated with urban runoff. It will be a logical step to apply the same best management practices to mitigate the toxicity effects to surface waters. And the primary reason for the robust recommendation was, I cannot quote, the DEP, DEP at that time concludes that there is a potential risk to surface waters and aquatic organisms associated with coal effluent and zinc toxicity of stormwater runoff from artificial turf fields. Zinc concentrations in the stormwater may cause exceedances of acute aquatic toxicity criteria for receiving surf waters, surface waters, especially smaller waters. Again, I understand that this is maybe more the purview of the Wetlands Commission. But I think under this wider spectrum, it also is something that I hope you would also consider. One of the things that we discovered is that this particular synthetic field has, is a little different than the ones that we usually look at. The ones we usually look at have an underling, they have sort of a forest, six, eight, ten inches of a forest material gravel underneath, at the bottom of which there's the underdrain. So when precipitation falls, carries whatever it carries through the synthetic rubber and also the synthetic grass, if you will. That there's some opportunity for something to happen in that, underneath, the water goes down, gets to the underdrain and goes to wherever it's being discharged. In this particular case, because the turf field is going to be on top of basically concrete slab, they don't have that six to eight inch porous gravel sand, if you will. What they do have is this material sitting on top of what they call like a shock a shock pad, which you understand is a lot of impact that's happening on top of it when it's being played. And then it's just that shock pad is basically what allows the water to shed laterally, because it's a little bit of a pitch from the center, off to the sides where it's being collected. What, what that does is, if you think about it, under the first scenario, the traditional ones, the water comes down through this layer, and so it passes through a few inches of this synthetic material, and then through the gravel. So it goes vertically. In this situation, because this whole thing sits on top of the shock pad, there's lateral movement that happens, so there's a lot more, should we say, a greater, greater leaching potential, because there's a greater contact time with the synthetic infill material. Now, the other thing too, that, you know, past the, the fact that we have some issues with this material and what they can potentially leach out of the environment, we have an issue with nitrogen. Again, nitrogen is a, is a pollutant. Not only for surface waters, but also for groundwater, because nitrogen in many of its forms is very, very soluble. So it, it moves long distances, and we all know that from separate systems, of course. What's, what the literature tells us, that there's up to forty percent of the nitrogen that we have to deal with in stormwater comes from atmospheric quality. That's been documented. And so I have some information there of how that goes, I'm not going to bore you with it. But the idea is, there's another pollutant that we also have to take care of. And it's not being taken care of. So we have zinc, for sure, we have some other contaminants, and we also have nitrogen that is not being properly dealt with. And interestingly enough, you know, one of our premier people in New England that look at stormwater issues and water quality, surface and groundwater is the University of New Hampshire Stormwater Center, and they do a lot of research, they're doing it for years. And I've met some of the people, and Mr. Trent House has also met some of the people that have done the research for years. And they did some synthetic field research, and it was an interesting result that we found in the publication. This is the two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen, China report. It said runoff from these fields, synthetic fields, contains higher amounts of dissolving organic nitrogen than nearby impermeable asphalt parking lots. And it appears that the turf chrome rubber infill is generating this nitrogen. Again, I think a lot has to do with the atmospheric fallout. So another final issue is, and this is one which has has come to the forefront, probably in the last ten or fifteen years. And that has to do with the fact that whether you have chrome rubber, whether you have this virgin rubber, they degrade over time. And so what happens is they release what's called microplastics, and this has become an area of a lot of concern. Basically, a very, very small fractions of of this rubber that kind of disintegrates and gets into the stormwater. And that has a lot of consequences to the environment, including organisms and plant growth. And I will give you some meta studies that were done. I think I have two here, it only made two copies. And these meta studies are basically, the researcher pulls all the information that's out there and analyzes and comes with one article. So they might look at two hundred, three hundred articles, and so they synthesize this information, and they come up with a conclusion. And so this is what these things do. And I'll build those into the record in a little bit. But I wanted to quote for some of these articles. So these, these issues with the meta study or the systematic review that we have here basically results that there is toxicological effects of microplastics on soil environment, which includes the effects on soil microbes, resident fauna, direct, or obviously the food chain, plant growth, and soil characteristics. And here's some, some takeaway. Destruction of soil structure, altering the physical chemical properties of soils and affecting nutrient mobility, emulsion diffusion, reduction of nutrient availability, alteration of microbial activity affecting nutrient cycling, with cascade effects upon plant development, growth and reduction of seed germination, slowing down the development of roots during germination, and others. But these are some of the major ones. Now, one question that I had immediately, the fact that we changed from chrome rubber to EPDM. Is EPDM, is it microplastics? The answer is yes. So I have a few articles that basically say that microplastic used in infill material in artificial support turfs reduces plant growth, and it talks about EPDM specifically, so they recognize the CPDM also having the issue with microplastics in the environment. And then I have some other articles that I'll produce that are more not like the one that I just gave you, which is maybe a synthesis from UMass Lower. But this is one that actually, it's a pure, your article that mentioned the study that I just gave you. So I'll produce that too. All right.
Mr. Logan, sorry to interrupt. Could you just clarify for us what has already been submitted into the record versus what's new? Because I know we already had two articles from you, so just.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, so probably the two articles, the meta studies were probably already put into the record.
I believe those were.
I believe. So what I'm giving you today is what I've already given you. I'm giving you this research article that says that, yeah, EPDM also is, is microplastics. So this is a microplastic used in infill material and artificial support curse reduced plant, plant growth is an example. These were already given. And then another one, which is artificial turf infill comparative assessment of chemical content, and it compares everything plus chrome rubber and EPDM, and some other things like cork. They use that too. So these will submit.
And then I would just ask that either Attorney Green or yourself email those to myself.
Absolutely. So I'll give them to you, girl, and you can do what you want with them. So I'm winding down here.
Yeah.
Because I know I, I'm just.
Mr. Green gave you fifteen minutes and we're at eighteen.
Great. All right. So the issue here with me is that we know, at least we're convinced that what they're using has a potential impact on the environment from zinc and other contaminants, and also of course the microplastics. So what should have been done is they should have had allowed for a robust stormwater management system, like the bio retention basin. Now, you're all familiar with bio retention basins. We call them rain gardens, because that's what we're all used to. But basically, it is, it's an above ground, it's like a detention basin, it's designed in size based on what's going to it. So when we look at the water quality volume, and it has a specific media. And sometimes the media is eighteen inches, sometimes it's more. And it's particular gradation, depending on what you think is going to it, so you can tailor it to take out the particular contaminants. And one thing that we know is that zinc, after a while, tends to glom to soil particles particularly fine, and then it's sequestered. Of course, what's happening now under the existing condition is that's being sequestered in the wetland, because it's under existing condition, this is direct discharge, the two points to the wetlands. And one of the recommendations that I had made, and maybe the applicant will come up with the information, is to we know this field has been there for a while. So why don't we go test what's behind, below these these areas, not just all from surface waters, but also from soils, that produce some water quality results, which I'm not going to bore you with tonight, because I don't think it's in the record anyhow, we'll deal with that in a while. But the idea again, the take home for me is that apart from such a robust stormwater management system like a bio retention, which was specifically designed in size for the water quality volume. In my mind, as the intervention says, there's a reasonable likelihood of unreasonable pollution and degradation of natural resources, including surface and groundwater. That's sort of my, my conclusion. Yes, sir.
Sir. Would a properly sized and constructed bioswale fix the issue, challenges that you've just outlined?
So what you would have to do, so it's not just a matter that you have a synthetic field that has a challenge in itself. There is also the fact that you have the atmospheric fallout, there's some side issues that I've been talking about, which is an expansion of some curvy surface, which has limited amount of ebony stormwater quality renovation. So you would do what the Stormwater Quality Manual says, is you look at the water quality volume, which you'll probably heard many times before, it's, it's basically the one inch runoff from a particular attachment area. So figure out what the field is, what's not the ancillary areas that are also coming in. And you make a calculation, you find out what their water quality volume is, and basically you retain it and let it filter through the bio retention system. You do that, you have a much better chance of not contaminating groundwater or surface water.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So if you do that, in my view, you have solved the problem. But the problem is that they would have to make some sacrifices, because there's, there's not a lot of land mass.
Where I'm going with this is that, let's assume for the sake of argument, that there are negative environmental effects of the installation that St. Luke's is planning. And that the ploneness of those negative effects can be ameliorated, not eliminated through a properly designed and constructed bioswale. You got to put it somewhere, and it begs the question, oh, you define somewhere. And given the footprint that's available, where, where does somewhere go? Putting that into the wetlands probably is a no go, I'm going to guess, but that's not my job, someone else's job. So where, where does it go? And so if the commission, which is if decides that there is a need for such a bioswale to address issues that it believes exist, you would have to decide where to put this. And so trying to get a sense of, you know, you're talking about ten square meters, fifty square meters, how big does it have to be? And where would you have to put it?
Sean, who's a design engineer, I'm not a designer.
Okay, I'll, we'll punt it to him. But you're saying that it is, what I'm hearing from you, sir, is that yes, there's a way to ameliorate this with a properly designed, constructed size bioswale. That's, that's what I'm hearing. Okay. One or two other questions. You mentioned other types of material being put in the cushion as opposed to chrome rubber, or let's call it virgin rubber. You mentioned cork, which of course is tree bark from tinfores, oaks grown in, usually it's Portugal, as I remember. Yeah. Mostly Portugal they grow. I've actually been to those forests, but anyway, topic for another day. But what about natural rubber, something else? Natural rubber is tree sap. Well, boil it down, maybe the wrong thing, but you know, there's other types of natural things that could be used. Is there another type of medium that would, again, ameliorate the potential for toxic runoff?
That's a good question. I don't think I've researched it to the extent, but what I've, from previous projects that I've been involved with, where people were actually proposing these fields, and I was on the opponent's side. And to what you said, please put a bio retention area, but please put something to take care of it. And I recommended other things like that. And the question, the thing that I always got back from them, they don't drain properly. So there was issues with drainage. So they, they wanted some kind of a chrome rubber, which is also it's something that can be replaced, that can be groomed better than some of these other products, I guess. Especially fields that are being used a lot. There's a lot of maintenance, as you probably have heard. There's, they put fungicides down, they put all kinds of chemicals to protect the people that play on it. So that's another issue itself. But which it's also a good point. But that's what I heard, is that some of these other things don't drain properly, and the fields subside and so on. So there might be another one that I'm not familiar with.
You say the term drain properly, some says euphemism of it doesn't drain as quickly as I'd like it to drain. And it becomes infiltration, right? I mean, many of us have wells and you have to have a prick test. And so how long does it take for water to go from here to there? Everything's permeable if you wait long enough. So the issue becomes one of, again, the type of bioswale you need. If it's, if the infiltration rate is slow, you need a bigger, all things being equal, I would assume, bioswale in order to deal with the slowness, so it has more volume. So instead of spilling over, it just expands to the, into the bigger bioswale, and then eventually.
Mr. Chris, we're not going to solve it.
Sorry.
Fair enough.
I'm just trying to get the engineers.
I, I'm trying to get it.
We'll leave that to the applicant and to the, to the intervenors to.
My, that was my last question, Mr. Chairman. I thank you for your indulgence.
But here's the thing, the, the, the issue is compounded here, because because they're putting it in a slab, so they don't have the ability to, it doesn't drain as well as the regular, traditional.
So on that, what is the shock pad made of?
Very good question. Probably some other rubber, maybe even BPDM for all I know. Because you're right.
Mr. Engel. Mr. Green, is somebody going to address the two documents submitted by the applicant last week? The two documents on the fifteenth and the sixteenth, one was the St. Luke's infill memo, which has got charts talking about the pass and fail of nickel, tin, zinc, chromium. It's in the record, you said it might be, it is, it's in the record, and they seem to suggest that this material passes. And so I'm trying to understand, is this defective? Are they, is this not an adequate test? Because it does not include things that you've mentioned like nitrogen. And the second document actually shows the sample points, one, two, and three. Are you saying that they are not sampling in the right places or enough places? So can you address their, their documents that were submitted last week into the record?
So for, Mr. Logan responds, Dr. Tian referenced the fact that they didn't test for the compounds of his concern, that he had testified for the Inland Wetlands Commission. His position was that that testing didn't address the issue that he raised, and then on the balance.
That's not clear to me. I, is, the, the same compounds that you're saying are problematic for EPDM and are on this chart. So I'm, it's not clear to me, Dr. Tian did not. I would like Dr. Tian or you to address their specific materials that they put on the record.
So what I was trying to say, to summarize, is that they gave some laboratory results. What I said, based on information I just supplied, is the same stuff has been tested. The same exact stuff, others, found to be wanting, and found high zinc, for instance, and other, other compounds that were not congruent, not consistent with what they, so the idea is that there's a variability to this compound. And so we would, we probably should look at, you know, the least common denominator, make sure that. Because maybe what they did is they cherry picked. They took, oh, this is the best result.
It occurs to me that your memo is from a test in Massachusetts in May of two thousand seventeen, but their test is in January of two thousand twenty four. And so I'm just trying to understand what is, what is defective about their test? And maybe we don't know yet, and that answer is going to come forward. But that's what I think we're going to have to concern ourselves with is the, the tests on this particular location with this particular.
Just to correct the timing, can, my understanding is that.
Sorry, can you state your name?
Sorry, Will Pierce, I'm part of the, Joe Green, these people represent me. Am I correct that the tests of the rubber compound were not in two thousand twenty four?
Two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen, that's what I was going to try.
And they're very controversial now, that people are doing independent testing of them. And you look at like the same patch, and like, one is like off the charts, like it would not pass the baby toy test. And then another.
That's the zinc, the thirty three hundred PPMs of zinc.
Sorry, can you state your name?
Sorry, Sarah Pierce. Um, yeah, so the information that we've gotten, it was that the testing is now very controversial in terms of passing these, that if you test in one part of the product, it's a completely different outcome than if you test, you know, two inches from that.
Okay, their tests are January twenty second, two thousand twenty four. And the, I mean, they're very specific, and you're right, the zinc is, seems to be very high at thirty three hundred PPMs, but is underneath their, conveniently underneath the four thousand limit. So maybe the limit is a bad one.
Do you look at the water test or the test of the material?
So there's the St. Luke's infill memo, and it's the charts on the final pages, six and seven of that memo that I'm referring to. And then there is the surface water quality testing memo is the other document.
I'll deal with that separately.
You'll deal with that separately. Okay. So if we go back to the infill memo, they, they they taught, everything is in pass, and they're all very small, single digit results, with the exception of zinc. Three, three, three thousand, three hundred and thirty, but the limit is five thousand. Are you saying that they're coming out with new limits and five thousand might not be the limit?
Those limits probably don't matter so much to us. What matters is the actual PPMs. So what I've been trying to say is that that's one test, but there are other tests that were done that show different concentrations. So there appears to be a variability for this same material. It's the same name, same moniker, same company that produces it. So we were, we're trying to be. So we were, we're trying to be conservative to make sure uh that whatever come and ends up happening here, that that we're looking at it from a perspective of worst case scenario, maybe this batch is not the best batch. Uh so let's do the right thing and have some somewhat of management that's gonna take care of whatever's in there. Even if it's on the high side, if it's not. Um now regarding their the water quality sampling, I looked at it um and I'll, I just wrote a few things that kind of purred my attention here when I looked at it. Number one, they did not provide the laboratory analytical results, chain of custody, stuff like that, but just have a little chart. You don't do that. Uh they did not test for chromium, which is in their other, and they did not test for copper, which we did. And they didn't test at the right locations, which is kind of, I'm looking at it going, they're not thinking right because, so they did three locations which are correct, but that's not the only locations. So the correction, the location they did is they did above stream, which is the same location that we did, maybe a few feet. They're on their property, we're on in the neighbor's property. Uh then they did uh at the property boundary, just before the stream leaves their property, perfect. Then they did the other tributary that's coming in before the pond. So they can see if something that's coming from there is gonna affect, you know, the other other one. But what they should have done is that it should have sampled uh for the stream of sample number one, which is the upstream, which I also did, just past of where the discharges from the existing synthetic field goes before goes to the pond. Right? And then they should have done it uh past the pond and past their other synthetic turf field that's there. To see, because you you might have good water quality at the end of the property, but it doesn't say anything about what's happening in the intermediate portion. So you know, as you know, the environment, what happens, it's a, it's a gradation. The impact is usually immediate and much more pronounced at the, at a discharge or below discharge and as time is, it goes down, it 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 becomes less and less. But this part is impacted. So and the funny thing is that I I recommended exactly that. I told them what were, what they should do and not only that they should do it there, but also that they should take samples, soil samples, because we wanted to see some other things that are happening. Um so they decided to kind of do this wide thing, which doesn't tell me anything, uh unfortunately. And also, if you, and maybe they looked at me and said, George, you didn't do wet weather sampling. Yeah, well, if I could have, I would have. But if you really wanna know what's happening, is you do it during wet weather. Because whatever has been sequestered at the stream, now with some water going through, it gets back into solution and now you you have a better effect, understanding of where the effect is. So if you really wanna know, you do wet weather sampling, you do it at the right locations. That didn't happen. So interestingly, I reviewed the two thousand thirteen and two thousand seventeen applications from the department downstairs. They have three, well, they have four fields on that campus. And the two thousand thirteen, two thousand seventeen applications use crumb rubber. Virgin material or they indicated crumb rubber in the application. And they have the access to test the soils around those fields. And to George's point, the discharge points for for coming up those fields. So they didn't do that. If I want to improve something, I want to do the other. That's what I would do. And just uh so we're clear, the laboratory testing, heavy metals analysis by Sports Labs was, the date of the report was June fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. And there's one more. And then the Labo Sport one is March sixteenth of twenty. And there's a considerable amount of literature that has come out in the last three years on this material. So it's also being reported by the manufacturer of the or the turn profession.
Mr. Cosmo?
Yes, several questions are cast at the record. Mr. Logan, these are for you. Uh so we have two existing fields, three existing fields that are already made with from rubber. For, uh is there any evidence of degradation of water quality in the area now? That's my first question. Second, what is a reasonable range or area that one should protect a well, for example, um generally um to try to protect water quality? I can't tell you whether that's a hundred yards or a hundred miles. And let me ask my third question. Um you testified at some point that you're concerned, for example, about nitrogen, but forty percent of that comes from the range, so that should be irrelevant to this because no action proposed here by the applicant affects fresh rainwater, correct? That, I just wanna confirm that I I'm surprised at the, like the time we've spent on nitrogen and uh and then my fourth question is, the existing field is there. Is it plausible that the proposed field would be more or less damaging than the existing field relative to surrounding wells?
So on the well question, I'm not sure. I mean, that's, that's something that I can, because I don't know where the wells are. Have a lot to do with what kind of wells they are, what kind of superficial materials they are.
So I'll ask a follow-up. I mean, we have many applicants or people in the room tonight. It did make sense from your perspective to actually ask the proximity of the wells? Because to the extent that I've been listening to all of this, the primary concern is that we will have damage to well water. And as a thirty-year well water owner here in town, I appreciate that concern, but we didn't look at the actual linear mapping of any of those wells relative to the proposed field. I didn't.
I guess one question that we've had is like, I have that question and I would love for Saint Luke's to have to pay to answer that question. Something like an engineer, I would love for an engineer on Saint Luke's side to answer that question.
But you've got three engineers on your side sitting here in the room. It seems like a straightforward.
We don't have access to a lot of the air.
No, 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 I'm not. I'm I'm saying Mr. Casavan's question is more general in terms of proximity of a well to a contaminant source. I know there is variables to it, but are we talking about if the well is, and correct me if I'm wrong. If the well is within a hundred feet, then the concern is incredibly high? Or is it incredibly low? Because it only has to be ten feet from the water source. I don't, I don't know what the answer is.
So and and the other part of this equation is, what is the question? Because you use the phrase degradation.
Uh I'm I'll be glad to restate my question. I'd like to get the answer.
It's a great question, but the the discussion that we've had and the materials that we've submitted and the reading that we're doing talks about this emerging area of microplastics, for example. Dr. Tian talked about compounds that are being released from this rubber and into the groundwater. And it's, so it's a broad question when you say degradation. It, it begs a lot of questions.
Mr. Green, with all due respect, we have a, the gentleman here purports to be an expert, unless I'm wrong. Andy, I have a very specific question. What is the range that a well owner should be concerned about? If the answer is you don't know that, period, please state that.
I don't know the specifics. So I can give you examples, but I don't know the specifics. So if I had the specifics and I was able to look at the hydrology of an area and the geohydrology of it, then I might be able to come up with an opinion, but other than that, I can't.
So for example, the state sets specific regulations as to how close a well can be to a septic system. It's part of building code. Correct. So that's the kind of information we're looking for as to evaluating a level of concern.
I wasn't asked to look at that, so I can't give you an answer. I I'd like to, but I can't. But now that we've kind of lost the other questions and I want to answer them.
Sure, I'll go back to them. The existing four fields, is is there any evidence of well water contamination?
Uh again, we don't know if there are wells on the site. The Saint Luke's have wells, I'm not sure. Is there public water there or wells? So I I don't know the answer to that. So if if it has anything to do with wells, because I don't have specifics on Saint Luke's or the surrounding areas the well wells are. I can't tell you. I know that everything comes, focuses on the particular stream. And so the hydrology of the stream kind of gives us an idea of where things are going. So any wells that might be in close vicinity to the water course as it leaves the site will be of a concern.
To use Mr. Green's phrase, what is close proximity?
Again, I I couldn't tell you. Could be a hundred feet. Now, I know that some, for instance, I'm I'm dealing with a situation in that field, but this is a public water supply well, which obviously has a much higher yield. And we're hundreds feet away and Connecticut Water Company is very concerned what we're doing. So, but whatever project they're doing. So it depends on the well, the yield, what's what it's in. Basically, the physiog- physiography of the particular area. Can we have Mr. Trinkus come forward?
Uh before he does that, can I add some information here? Uh the incredible detail you've given us today would suggest that you know the more simple answers to simple questions like the ones that have just been asked. And I'm, I'm quite surprised you don't know whether there's wells or even whether the water is coming from the public system or in the ground. And I didn't even hear the word aquifer used once in your description of anything, which is actually where the water comes from, if it's a well. And and the, and and the aqua, the water and aquifer changes every day. So you tested one day, it's different the next day. Um so I have a little concern about your testimony today. The detail was terrific, but the specificity on things that are actually impacting the site right now is so somewhat unknown.
Right. So what I'm trying to say to you is that I have not specifically been asked to look at the well issue. So I came from testimony and weapons. I have testimony that I can give here, which I think is of interest to this commission. I was asked specifically to look at the well question. So if time is given and we can look into it, we can certainly give an answer, but because I don't have the answer, shouldn't bring the rest of my testimony to question. That's illogical.
Oh, to me, it's very logical, but will agree differently.
You're making a very big step in logic, in my view. Wait, um so just ask Mr. Trinkus.
Yeah, before Mr. Trinkus steps up, I have one more question on on the um contaminant. On the level of contaminants that are discharged from what we're talking about, which is the EPDM um infill. Would it be safe to assume that that's the same level of contaminant that would be discharged from an EPDM roofing material?
No.
Why?
Because the EPDM roofing material, as far as I know, has coatings.
Has what?
Coatings. And these particular particles are very small, so they have a lot of surface air. So that means there's a potential for leaching as a lot of fire than for a flat roofing that is EPDM has a coating.
Yes.
And I've I've looked at, and you're right, EPDM is used excessively for rubber.
I think attorney should respect this.
Sure. Mr. Finn?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quite, a couple, a few questions for uh Mr. Logan. Uh uh m- m- Mr. Logan, uh you indicated that the test results of the EPDM that you looked at predated the test results that were recently submitted by the applicant by two or three years. Is that, is that correct?
That's about right.
Okay. And do you know for a fact whether those earlier studies tested the exact same material uh and the exact same formulation of EPDM as the test results that were recently submitted by the applicant?
I can't that say for sure. The only thing I can tell you is that it has the same name and the same product moniker, if you will, so.
And that moniker is EPDM, is that right?
No, um like I gave you. It is. Uh it's called TTII PlaySafe sixty-five EPDM infill. This is from the article of the previous testing and it's the same one as the one that uh she folks produced uh for this change.
Right. And so, but you indicated that uh the test results may be due to variability, is that correct? The difference in the, let let me rephrase that, that the difference in the test results between the earlier test results that you found and the test results that were submitted by the applicant uh could very well be due to variability in the material. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um I'm sorry, you had some questions for me and I, now that I completely lost the questions.
Yeah, no, my my question is, I don't know that Mr. Trinkis is gonna try and address these, but to repeat them were, does anyone have a map of the well proximity to the site? Do we have any evidence of well water degradation from the existing, and I believe you said it was four fields? Is there any possibility that the proposed field would actually be better or worse than the existing field in terms of water quality? I guess that's probably the summation of my questions.
Can I just ask a clarification? Are you talking about for well water or for the water course?
An excellent question, Cat. Uh I I my hearing of this so far has been that the uh variety, the intervenor specifically, but also the people who've commented have been extremely concerned about impact on primarily drinking water and uh well water. And and my, so the questions I'm trying to understand are, is there any scientific basis for that? And how have we measured that? Or or how has the group prefaced it? Thank you.
One thing that I, I might want to say is, unless I misunderstood what was being said earlier on, is that we're not just talking about well water, we're just talking about water quality in the environment. So that includes surface water and the interface between surface and ground. On your question of whether this is better or worse, the the only way that I can say that is that perhaps crumb rubber is a little worse than EPDM. But some of the same um chemicals leach out of both, which are concerned to the environment. And so the solution that we're proposing is that stormwater management system should have been designed and sized to accommodate for for those things. That has not been done.
And I might just add, Will Pierce for the record, um our concerns are exactly your questions, but there's only so many resources that I can bring to bear to this problem. Like I've, I'm now more than a Saint Luke's tuition into this. And I have thousands more questions that I don't have the answers to, because I don't have access to Saint Luke's property. Like, like you, nothing you've asked is not, you're asking totally the right questions. I've had to undertake this process totally on my own, fully funded by me, because I have no idea. And my experts.
The applicant had not answered these questions.
I I want, I want those answers. You are, they're, they're right. I would love if you asked those questions. I thought it was supposed to be the applicant's job to answer these questions. We have no answers. Every piece of data so far has come from me having hired these guys. And as they testified, most of the time, they're working for the other team.
Can anybody hear me? I'm not, I'm not seeing anything or hearing anything.
Yes.
Everyone on Zoom, we, we've, we've lost the main TV, so we are officially hitting pause for a moment while we try to figure out what went on. So we were aware that it's not working, so we're going to stop for a couple of minutes. Hopefully, we'll be up and running soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
So, yeah.
These are good questions. We have them too. And it's why many of the neighbors and Sarah Pierce, that's why many of us have asked if there's any question about these drinking water issues, what other towns have done and what we've been advised other towns and similar positions have done is hire a third-party engineer so that you're not relying on our engineer or their engineer. You're relying on your own engineer.
Right. And then I guess just to finish, Will Pierce, sorry for the record. This isn't just a question of drinking water. This is an environmental issue at whole, as I sort of, you know, passionately pleaded, like, I don't have the answers. I don't know that my experts have the answers because we have limited resources and
Time.
and time. And so we're trying to get as many issues as we can find to present so that we can try to make, frankly, so you guys can try to make the most informed decision you can. And so I can understand what's going on. But thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that and we totally understand as well. That's why we're here asking the questions and trying to dig deeper into what your concerns are and how to solve that information, right? And what I was, right before we got cut off, got cut off, what I was saying is we asked the applicant for data on the contaminant discharge. They gave us a document that gave us a listing of the contaminants and that it was in past levels. That's what's on record. Your, your engineer here submitted information countering that today. So you're saying that the applicant's not giving you information. They provided information that you asked for. You don't necessarily agree with it, or your engineer doesn't agree with it, but that's what was submitted.
I think that the burden somehow has shifted to the intervenors on the overall application. And that what I draw from a lot of your questions would suggest that the public, the interveners would, for example, survey local wells or do a survey or do a groundwater survey or do a hydrological survey to show that, that, that these compounds are necessarily reaching wells in households in the area. And
That's, that's not what we said. We, we asked, Mr. Casavon asked, have you done any study on the wells and their proximity? Doesn't mean we're asking you to do it.
Okay.
It was a question, have you done that? Because as interveners, you're coming to us questioning, questioning the integrity of the wells and whether the contaminants will affect them. So it's, it's merely a question to see whether that background work has been done or not.
We are motivated, we are motivated by those concerns. Our burden is to show that the public trust in the air, water, or natural resources is impaired, that there is pollution, or that the public trust is impaired by virtue of the conduct. Dr. Tian and Mr. Logan have testified that there are compounds, materials, and metals that come off these materials and go into the ground and presumably to the groundwater. So I would suggest that our burden on the intervention has been met. And it is not that great a burden to become a party to a proceeding where the public trust is, is impaired. It is, the burden is on the applicant where there is this discussion of these potential harms to demonstrate that they can execute this plan without any harm to the air, water, and natural resources of any kind. And it's their burden, and we would suggest they haven't come near that. They're not treating this at all. They haven't explored, they haven't looked for the compounds that Dr. Tian has identified. There's this discussion of PFAs that are shed, and there were some articles that we submitted that talk about PFAs and other compounds that are shed from turf fields, from the fibers in the grass and from the materials. And the applicant has tested the metals in the water at the boundary of the property. So I just, I appreciate the diligence of this commission, and I appreciate the depth dialogue that we've had here. But I think that to some degree, this light, these answers have to come from the applicant and that the burden to become a party under 22A19 is not to necessarily connect these dots to that extent, but to get into the air, water, or the ground, basically, or into the natural resources. So I, great, I, I think it's a great dialogue. I think it's, a lot of great questions have been asked. And there are a lot of concerns here, and I appreciate the concern. And that's why the neighborhood is here, because they are concerned. But the applicant has to come forward and show why they haven't tested for these materials. And I don't, I would suggest it is just not good enough to test for metals or produce this testing in the face of what we've presented with Dr. Tian and what you heard in that video. It's not enough because the question is out there on these compounds.
That's fair. And, and that is at the conclusion of your presentation on this. And once we hear from the town engineer, and once we go into deliberation, we'll, we'll determine what additional information, if any, we're going to be looking for from the applicant. That's our role. Why don't we keep going? Mr. Logan, is there anything else you'd like to add? So you mentioned Mr. Trinkus.
I, I just want Mr. Trinkus to briefly address, just to sort of close, one of, to sort of answer one of the questions that was asked about sort of the hydrology and the wells question.
And then am I correct? You have one more person, James McAnus?
I'm not going to present him this evening. I think we're going to move it along.
That's fair. Good evening. State your name, please.
Oh, good evening. Stephen Trinkus. For the record, I'm a professional engineer with an office in Southbury, Connecticut. So I'd like to just address the well setback issue that was raised. Under the health code, a septic system, as an example, is 75 feet from a well. However, depending on the pumping rate of the well, that setback can double to 150 feet. If the pumping rate is greater than 10 gallons a minute, the setback effectively doubles. With any type of well, the more you pump, you get what's called the drawdown curve, where from the bottom of the well, pretty much exponentially, it extends out and it draws water. The more you pump, the greater the radius that you're drawing from. When pollutants are from stormwater or going into a wetland or stream, you know, ultimately, they do get down into bedrock fractures. I mean, water moves through the soil. If there's very solid bedrock, obviously, like marble, you don't get many cracks in it. But granite, which is common in this portion of New England, you know, there are cracks in it because that's where your well is. Your well is drilled down until it hits an existing crack of water. And depending on the yield within that crack determines the depth of your well. So if you go down 200 feet and you get six gallons a minute, you're pretty much done. If you get half a gallon a minute, you're down 700, 800 feet under the health code. The deeper, the slower the yield, the deeper you have to go. So, but when water is in a wetland and moves through the soil and possibly moves down to the bedrock, water can travel in these cracks for long distances, and it doesn't necessarily follow topography. The way to determine where the groundwater is moving is to have a hydrogeologic study done by a firm, formerly Leggett Pressures and Graham, which was in Wilton. Rob Good, who's a principal formerly at LBG, is now at Wesson and Sampson out of Berlin, I believe. But hydrogeologists will map the types of bedrock and the direction of the cracks and be able to tell you pretty much how the groundwater through the soil and then into the bedrock is moving, what directions it's moving. But that's the only way to tell. But it does move very far distances, and it doesn't necessarily follow topography. It can move laterally. If you have sand and gravel soils, it's not uncommon that the groundwater gradient actually is not following the surface topography. So those are the, you know, those are the setbacks that are for residential wells. But the only way to know the impacts is to have the hydrogeologic study done.
Further, Dr. Tian is back.
Is that, is that, is John Engel, is that your recommendation that the town ask for a hydrogeologic study from the expert in Berlin?
It is my professional opinion that that should be provided by the applicant to prove that the pollutants from the turf field and the parking lot, which I raised previously, are not going to affect the wells. The burden is on the applicant to prove that.
And the guy in Berlin can tell us that. And the guy in Berlin can tell us that.
Well, a hydrogeologist, he's just one of several that I know.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Nielsen. This hydrogeology report that you're discussing sounds to me like an alternative to the applicant if they're not able to show that they're going to have bio retention and cleaning of the water on site.
Well, as low-impact development, is my expertise, as Mr. Logan kind of alluded to. Bio retention is an LID infiltration practice. You have to have soils suitable for infiltration. As we have no soil data outside the turf field areas to know what the soils are, except that we know under the field is film material, it's not necessarily feasible to put a bio retention system in because they are designed to infiltrate. Now, you can put them in soils that don't infiltrate. You have to line them, and then you still have a discharge, but you can at least filter the water. Bio retentions are, systems are more effective than a bioswale. A bioswale is a conveyance system. It's not a holding, it's not a depressed area like a bio retention is. So.
But you just said you don't have the soil data to be able to say whether it's possible or not.
Not for a bio retention system that would infiltrate. You could put one there that's lined with an impermeable liner to prevent infiltration, but for a true bio retention, which is designed to filter the water and infiltrate it back into the ground, we don't have any soil data to know that the soils are suitable for such a system.
So it could be possible.
It could be. We just don't have any data from the applicant.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Trinkus?
Commissioner Chris, just to be clear, so a bio retention or a bioswale for effectiveness needs a certain soil conditions. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah, they're both infiltration.
I was looking for a yes and a no.
Well, yes, they need, they're, they're both infiltration practices, so you need soil conditions to know that the underlying soil will infiltrate water.
And for either one of these, if the soil conditions are not appropriate, they're not going to work. This bio retention or bioswale will not work.
Well, a bioswale is again, as I said, it's a conveyance system. Think of a swale that runs down the slope. The bio retention is a depressed landscaped area where the water collects in a level-bottomed system, filters through the media. You could do that on this site and line it with an impermeable liner because you have, we do know, at least under the turf field, we have, you know, unsuitable material, not native soils. So you could line it to filter it, but then you would still have a discharge. And the bio retention systems do reduce pollutants. They don't eliminate them, but they can substantially reduce many of the different types.
Fair enough. Thank you. Commissioners, anything else for Mr. Trinkus?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Tian is back. I don't know whether there are any questions.
Commissioners, I did not, but any commissioners? Nope, I think we're good.
Okay. So what we will do, look, I've already made the presentation of the burden of petition intervening stated in the petition. Once again, with the conduct of the public trust in air, water, and natural resources, we have shown that there are compounds that come off from rubber. Dr. Tian has talked about, Mr. Logan spoke about metal.
Excuse me. I'm, I'm very sorry to interrupt, but I cannot hear Attorney Green at all.
Yep, he did not turn his mic on.
I thought you'd be pleased with that, Steve.
Well, I, I, I am looking for some comic relief, so I would like to hear what you have to say, but please.
We'll do our best.
Please, please begin again, Joel. Please begin again.
I'll happily do that. I was saying nice things about you, Steve.
I'm sure you are.
So we, look, we've addressed the burden on the intervention. We have stated, and Attorney Finn actually and I have spent a lot of time talking about petitions to intervene for various commissions. And he often says, what are the specific claims? And you have to allege specific claims in your petition to intervene. The easy one, once again, is the parking lot. We do claim that the tennis court, use of the tennis court is something that will continue during the construction of this project. There's been no indication by the applicant that that's ever going to change. They, I guess, in theory, this might alleviate that in their mind, but we will disabuse you of that notion when we address the special permit and the site plan. But the tennis court has no treatment at all. There is abundant proof that cars are, I mean, the applicant has stated that they park 80 or more cars routinely on the tennis court. I will state that I have reviewed the records of the 2013 and 2017, and I am not aware of any permit that had stormwater treatment for water being shed by rainwater or snow melt off the tennis courts. The applicant has stated that one of the benefits of their plan, once again, is that cars would be parked under the deck, and all of those metals, oils, petroleum products, grit, and the like would be mitigated by virtue of that. So they admit that those sorts of compounds come off of vehicles. Mr. Trinkus testified to that. So that is an easy one right there, that there is pollution going on, at least, at the very least, in these soils around the tennis court. And we believe to the groundwater, but that's something we obviously couldn't have not and could not test. The other, the other portion of our petition to intervene, we alleged specifically that the field involves the removal of the existing turf field with brittle plastic fibers. It was a discussion of the compounds that are shed by the fibers. I read the 2017, 2013 applications. They did reference the use of crumb rubber in those fields. So, and it's interesting, once again, that the applicant is now presuming to use a virgin, quote, virgin rubber or EPDM, which suggests to me that they have concerns about the crumb rubber that they have used in the past. But you have testimony before you that there is leaching into the soil. We have testified that there's leaching into the groundwater. No, we could not possibly respond to the extent and travel of that, nor would neighbors ever be tasked with conducting hydrologic survey on a property like this. Nor do I think that St. Luke's would be amenable to our doing that. But again, the burden is on St. Luke's, but we'll get to that on the primary application. But we would suggest that in the fair exercise of the jurisdiction of the commission on a petition to intervene, that it has been demonstrated, and as I keep referencing, the public is here because their trust in this project is compared by virtue of the potential for the pollution that we've testified to. So with that, I'm going to close on the petition to intervene. And I'm sure Attorney Finn has some comments for you on it, and that's all I have. I don't know if you have questions for me.
I, yeah, come on. I have one question. You've seen the applicant's drawings of the systems that they're proposing.
You've seen the applicant's drawings of the systems that they're proposing. In your opinion, and in your engineer's opinions, are they compliant with all state regulations for discharge?
The answer is no. And you'll hear tonight, and we'll get into this on our case in chief, but also potentially in response to other testimony, that the town initially was of the position that the system must comply with the stormwater manual, the 2004 DEP stormwater manual. Mr. Trinkus, in his report, highlighted that the, there is no treatment, that the system, the stormwater system, there has to be soil testing under the stormwater system, and there has to be a certain distance between the bottom of the system and groundwater. The applicant has not conducted soil testing and cannot demonstrate the quality of the soil in which the stormwater system sits. Interestingly, a town engineer had indicated that compliance with the stormwater manual in the December 4th memo that's of record, that the applicant must comply with the stormwater manual. The applicant and their engineering documents suggested that they had complied, that their system was in compliance with the stormwater manual. It is not in compliance with the stormwater manual. And so it is our position that they have not provided the testing or provided the investigative work. And this goes right into our, our presentation, which is, the whole point and the origin of this whole application is that their field is allegedly settling, that there are places on this football field where there were organic, there was fill that contained organic material. There were trees, there were logs and wood, I don't know what other sorts of organic brush that were buried under this field. And over time, that material decomposes and the, sort of the foundation for the field, it settles. And as a result, there are these depressions under the field. That was where this started after 20 years. I think the testimony was that the field had a 15-year life. It's been 20 years, 18 years. I don't have the exact numbers, but that is sort of the beginning. And our point is that to understand this project, there has to be robust testing to understand how much soil has to be removed, how much of that organic material needs to be excavated from the site. Because whether it's a football field or whether it's a parking lot, you have to have, and Mr. Trinkus will, will provide that testimony, there has to be, you have to get to native material. How am I doing? You have to get to native material, and you have to clear out that organic material, and you have to put fill in that will support it, whether it is a football field or a parking garage. And the applicant has not provided that information. Of interest to this commission might be, how many truckloads of material? How much excavation? How large does the stockpiling have to be? How many trucks are going to be rumbling up and down the road as part of this project? It hasn't been answered. So that's kind of the too long answer, but that's the answer to that question.
Okay. Mr. Green, anything further on your presentation?
Yeah. And so let's get, I think the, the easy start is on the site plan. And the remaining pieces that we'll talk about are the special permit and the site plan.
Just give us, give us an idea of what is left in your presentation. We're two hours and 15 minutes into it, so.
Well, there were a lot of questions, but I need probably about 20 minutes or half an hour.
Okay.
And I will move it along. But, you know, at the beginning of this whole application, the whole application is caused by a problem that St. Luke's has created itself. Can I share a screen? Okay. And there it is. That's the enrollment of the school. And that is what is driving everything here. That is what is driving traffic. That is what is driving parking. And as you heard Sarah Pierce say in her presentation, the school has gotten too large for its site. That's the bottom line. And the school has not really listened to its neighbors. It hasn't respected its neighbors, and it keeps increasing enrollment. And it does basically what's good for the school and not what's good for its neighbors. And as I, when I started this presentation on January 30th, I pointed out that the school has not been a good neighbor. They have not listened to their neighbors at all, and they increased enrollment. And now they are saying basically that it's everyone else's problem and it's not their problem. They are not accountable on this. And I just may have not, they cleared for the commission, they made representations regarding, and I don't want to misquote this, but basically they've referenced a January meeting with neighbors and an October meeting with neighbors. And the quote is, "Once they understood, they liked it, although a few had questions." That was, that was the comment, and I just want to. And I'm sorry. Here's who has questions surrounding the site. These are neighbors who have signed on in opposition to this plan. Now, I should point out to you that this property here is in an estate that we could not reach, and this property, we couldn't reach the owner.
Which?
Right here on.
Next to 17.
Next to 17.
And those other four properties are owned by St. Luke's.
And one, two, three, four are owned by, and this will lead to my next discussion. They are owned by affiliates of St. Luke's. And I think that early on, questions were asked about sort of enlarging the campus or what capacity St. Luke's had. And St. Luke's had suggested that they had other properties. They weren't looking to necessarily hide those properties, and yet none of those properties show St. Luke's as owners. They have names, they have names like 184 Soundview or Deer Valley LLC. None of them use St. Luke's as an address for the company. And, and yet on their 990, which I've submitted, you know, I've submitted the 990 page from their 990, and their 990 states that they have these investment properties, and they list them. So when you asked, and I can't remember which commissioner asked about the ability to use other parts of the site or what the coverage numbers were, they really weren't quite forthright or as forthright as we might have hoped in terms of what they have and what their abilities are. And that is inconsistent throughout the documents. And look, I'm going to say it a third time because I listened to the video, I watched the video again, and I'm going to say it again. I'm sure that St. Luke's does a great job educating their students, and I don't mean to, I don't mean to be critical of that at all. But in terms of this application, it is incomplete. It is not well thought out. And I will show you that it does not comply with the zoning regulations in a variety of respects. And I brought some documents, and in terms of being forthright, this document.
So Attorney Green, I would just ask that if you're going to show anything, it needs to be done on Zoom to be fair to the commissioners and the public on Zoom.
With documents so that you can see this close. And I will put it up on screen. St. Luke's, to start your application, used a survey that was produced in 2017.
Again, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but these documents have to be shown on Zoom in order to be introduced to the commission.
Here it comes.
All right, great.
Okay, let's find. Yeah, I like using that anyways. Okay. Here's the document so that you can see it. Can everyone see that on Zoom now?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay. So this is actually, and I have some large copies if the commission, if anyone on the commission wants a larger copy, if you can't see detail. So what basically happened with this document is this goes back to 2017. Your regulations require that with a site plan or with a special permit application, you have to submit an A2 survey, among other documents. So this was the document that St. Luke's has submitted as the A2 survey to support this application. And on questioning, you asked how many parking spaces. I can't remember which commissioner specifically, but the, I believe the answer was that there's 167 spaces on the site, and there was a, and this was the base drawing that was also used by SMART for all of its drawings that are in the application and in the site plan package. This site plan does not really begin to, well, it begins, but it does not disclose what's actually going on, on the St. Luke's campus. You'll see that part of this application, there were several buildings and structures that had to be removed, and they had to be removed so that St. Luke's could get to coverage, which was less than 100 feet. Once that development was done on this entire site, coverage was down to like 100 square feet. They were under their coverage. And this is going to take. So first thing I want to do is I want to show you the, I will, I'm going to stop this share, and I can't share these simultaneously. This is the Google Earth photo that I was able to download yesterday. You can see that in the southeast corner of the property, there is now a parking lot. The first page of the document I gave you is actually the tennis court parking, so you can see the robust use of the tennis court for cars. If you go to the second page, and if you look at your, the survey that I gave you, there's actually a parking lot located on the southeast corner of the property that's not shown on their A2 survey. You can also see that they've established parking spaces adjacent to the building that are not shown on their A2 survey. I can actually zoom in on this if it'll help. What's that? Yeah, all right. I'm going to show another document. I'm told that there is parking now by the art house, which is adjacent to, and I spoke to Dr. Kavuk, Kavuk Tian, who told me that there's actually parking established on the northern portion of the property that is not shown on their A2 survey. So the point is that there are several areas of parking and several, and actually there's more. Let me keep going here. This is the maintenance area, which is being used for parking, once again, in violation of the zoning regulations. But just so you know, there's a lot here where vehicles are stored routinely.
Going back to the original, it's not that way in the beginning, how does this efficient information on the parking around the rest of the site affect your intervention?
It's not to the intervention, it's to the site. The basic drawings that they're showing and that they're using as their baseline drawings are based on a survey that's not accurate, that's.
But the survey that you just circulated, that was part of their, I think it was 2016 or 2017 application?
It's part of this application.
Okay.
This is the survey they are using to support this application. It's item number. And the plan set. I guess I was unclear.
Commissioner Chris, so to be clear, Mr. Green, this rectangular, large document you just handed to the commission is, what you're saying is what has been filed by the applicant for part of this application?
As part of this site plan set for this application.
And you're saying that the, this site plan is not accurate as regard all features of the campus?
Not.
Okay. Just want to be clear exactly what you're stating, sir. Thank you.
And, oh, am I going to show this? Okay. I can show this. These, some of these drawings are large, so sometimes it's hard to get them to.
So Attorney Green, I think what Dan was trying to ask is just, so right now, you're not, you're representing the Pearces just as their attorney, but you're not representing as the environmental intervenor at this time. So you're just.
I'm wearing those hats.
Okay, so it's just, you know, if you're not wearing the environmental intervenor hat, then you're just providing public input at this point. You know, we've limited other people, I think, to not half an hour. So I think, I don't, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, if that's what you were.
That's where I was going at it. If you, if you're here as the environmental intervenor, we've had that presentation. If you're here commenting on topics like this, the site plan not being accurate, that there's parking, which you're more than welcome to do, we've limited that time to the rest of the public as to how much time they dedicate to that. So.
Why?
Because we don't want to be here for nights on end. There has to be.
Well, I've been here all my life. I've been here for 20 years.
I understand that. I'm sorry.
I'm mad. So 10 nights is three hours, isn't it?
When we get into a, this is the intervenor's time. If we want to get into a public discussion, we'll have you come up, give your name and state your issue. Thank you. So my point is, we'd like to focus on the environmental intervening.
All right. I'll tie, I'll tie it in.
Okay.
I'll tie it in. But, okay, so here is a sample of the drawing SMART used for this application. And you can see that it basically took that 2017 site plan, and for example, along the building here in the back southeast corner of the building, there's no parking shown here. There's no parking shown up by the art house along North Wilton Road. Basically, they took a 2017 survey and filed it with an application in October of 2023. They didn't resurvey the property. So the whole site plan and the whole special permit are not based on current drawings. So that's item one. Item two. And what I, here's what I would propose. I think that, I will move my presentation along really quickly, but I want to touch on a few points on defects in the site plan and special permit that'll make it, I think that will make it clear that this commission cannot consider this application because it is not zoning compliant. And I can easily show you areas of this plan that are not zoning compliant. Now, I already talked about the fact that you can't have a structure, you can't have a parking structure in a residential zone. We covered that at the last session, and presumably you're looking at that with the town attorney. And let me just, I'll go with the, a lot of the calculations that were made by the applicant in terms of metrics or drainage and metrics were based on the. and metrics were based on the size of the property. And this survey, the survey that I presented from 2017, does not accurately reflect the size of the parcel. And right at the moment, the parcel is over coverage. And the reason I say that is because the regulations require that any portion of the site that is less than half of the minimum lot width in the residential zone does not count towards lot area. I had Mr. Trinkus do a calculation in the area. And let me just call up that drawing again. For example, this northern area of the site, here, there's an area of this portion of the site that is narrower than half the minimum lot width. And I can cite you to the section of the zoning regulations. And it was done wrong in 2017. And it continues to be done wrong by the applicant. And also, there's an area on the southern corner of the property that is similarly too narrow. And the net result of that is that it reduces the property by more than a half an acre. Mr. Trinkus, can you just comment on your methodology on that? And it's section 3.
I'm sorry, I cannot, I cannot hear Mr. Green again.
They're over coverage and under the regulations if there's a violation on the site. And the reason I talk about, the reason I talk about violations of parking vehicles, violation of using the tennis court, violation of commercial vehicles, violation of a site that's over on coverage, is your regulations say that you cannot grant a site plan approval or a special permit for a site that has zoning violations existing on it.
Yeah, but they're, they're operating under a special permit that doesn't necessarily have to conform to the coverage requirements of a four acre zone.
Dan, we'll, we'll accept their comments on this. And, you know, you will deliberate to determine later if it is a zoning violation or not.
So continue listing your issues.
I, I didn't hear your comment. They're operating under a special permit.
They're, they're operating under a special permit here in a four acre zone. It doesn't necessarily mean that they have to conform to every requirement of a residential structure in the four acre zone.
You cannot grant.
We're not getting into the specifics of the previous special permit approval right now. Where the commission will accept what you're taking for now. And as they deliberate, they will determine whether these items that you're bringing up are violations or not. They're not commenting on them right now. But thank you for bringing them to the commission's attention.
Okay, Mr. Trinkus.
Yes, Steve Trinkus is the record. The way I determined the areas that were less than half the 300, 300 foot, I believe was the thing, so basically, actually 350 foot was 175, was taking the PDF of the map, putting it into AutoCAD, scaling it up, and verifying the lengths of several of the property lines. You know, you're gaining the scale to roughly a six inches different from what the map says, which is pretty accurate in CAD. And then simply going trial and error and figuring out the two triangle areas where the width between the sidelines was 175 feet or less. And then drawing what we call a poly line, which is a continuous line of that line, the two property lines, and getting an area both on the north end and the southern end. And then having an area, which I provided to Mr. Green, which reduced the, you know, total area of the site.
The definition of lot area is set forth in section 2.2. And it includes the total horizontal area included within lot lines, but excludes any portion of the lot having less than 50% of the required lot width. And that is excluded from the lot area.
This is Commissioner Nielsen. I have a question on Zoom. I know Mr. Trinkus is a civil engineer. Is he also a land surveyor licensed in the state of Connecticut?
Steve Trinkus, to respond to that, I am not a licensed land surveyor. However, I worked for a licensed land surveyor since 1976 to 1987, John Fuller in Georgetown. And as part of my engineering job, I know how to do the areas of these maps. I've worked with many different surveyors. And I stand behind figuring out the area on this, in this particular case.
And in the course of your engineering practice, do you frequently have to calculate lot area?
Yes, I do. When I do subdivision work, when I have a survey map, I lay out the roads. I lay out the lot areas, making sure they conform. I provide that back to the surveyor to draw the A2 map. So I'm very familiar and comfortable determining these areas.
Let me give you, I'll give you an easy one. Here is the. Here is the drawing of the parking lot.
Mr. Green, we, we understand you're contesting the survey as not being accurate, that it doesn't represent existing conditions. Do you have anything else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here is a parking lot that has 200 parking spaces in it. It has 200 parking spaces, six handicap spaces, 200 in all, nine foot by 18 foot parking spaces. Your zoning regulations require that parking spaces be 20 feet deep.
In our town?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Let me show you the regulation. Does it have the regulation?
I thought it was 18.
Yeah, well. Here it is, size of parking spaces. That is section 6.2G. 90-degree parking. Curb length, nine feet. Stall depth, 20 feet. Vehicular access to a 24 feet. Even if it's a one.
Drive, driveway width.
What's that? Driveway width is 24. So they have 24 feet, but all of the parking spaces in that garage are not complying. None of them. And there's no waiver provision in the regulations. So we can spend, and I can keep going.
Actually, I'd, I'd ask a question about that. Did you write all these down in a simple format that someone could look at them and determine? I mean, you've stated a bunch of them tonight, but I mean, is there a list of 12 bullets that you think are wrong?
I'd be happy to do that. I haven't.
And you didn't submit that before?
No.
Okay, thank you. I think that would extremely be, be very useful for determining, you know, the accuracy. I mean, we keep fighting our way to try to get to what your points are. And, you know, some of them may be quite valid. It would be useful to just have them listed.
I'd be happy to submit a written summary. I'd be happy to do that. I could, I could submit before the week's out if you'd like.
That's fine. Just continue and wrap up the rest of the points.
Well, I'll submit a writing on the. I'll submit a writing on the site plan comments. And I'll put in all the comments I have on the, on the site plan deficiencies, so I don't take up the time of the commission. However, in terms of the text amendment, may I just take a few moments on the text amendment? So the text amendment is written and it's, it says, quote, "It would have this commission adopt 3.7E to F", which would be "single-level parking structures primarily used for passenger vehicles constructed underneath areas that are maintained as open space or athletic fields where the visual impact is mitigated by site design and surrounding topography." That is what you were being asked to consider as a regulation. It is incredibly vague. And I would suggest that it flies in the face of uniformity. And there's no way of knowing as a property owner whether you meet that regulation or not. It is a soft regulation. It mischaracterizes the essential nature of the structure at issue. And it's really misleading. Because this isn't a single-level parking structure beneath open space and athletic fields. It's a one-story building with a concrete roof. It's got a concrete slab roof. And on top of that, they have put an athletic turf field. And I find it hard to believe that this commission would adopt a regulation where anyone on any lot could create a parking structure on their property by creating a, what they would call a turf field, I suppose, on the roof, where you can't see it from the road, where it's in someone's backyard, for example, and it doesn't count toward coverage. Some house that's a rear lot in the woods. How would you ever be able to deny an application if I put green carpet on the roof and suggest that it's a playing field? It's an absurd regulation. The applicant, applicant talks about the lack of desirability of surface parking lots because they increase impermeable surfaces. That is laughable for an applicant that has put four giant turf fields on their property that is completely impermeable. Those fields are impermeable. And has huge amount of impermeable surface parking lots. It is absurd that they are coming to you and saying, "We, we think it's a great goal for this commission to eliminate impermeable surfaces." I had an aerial photo. I, I guess it's in the record. You'll see it. You know, your landscaping requirements have all these requirements for parking lots. And you went to great lengths to adopt, adopt regulations for landscaping and to make parking lots attractive. And berms, plantings, traffic islands, all those kinds of things. But all I have to do is put a green carpet on the roof. It is not the same thing. You're increasing the impermeable area, by the way, by over 10,000 feet with these cantilevers hanging out. It's an elevated playing field. It is obvious that the higher the field is, that it will bring into play noise issues from play. It's going to be that much higher. By the way, on the height, I have submitted, as I understood it, the applicant, and this will be in my summary of the infirmities in the site.
I thought you were already in the summary.
And not of the site plan, but I have to mention this one thing. I believe the applicant said that the parking structure had seven and a half feet of clearance. Under your regulations, with a lot of eight feet. Shaking your head. Seven and a half feet of clearance, I believe, is what I heard. Under your regulations, they have to have six handicap spaces, including one handicap van accessible space. The ADA regulations that I put into the record show that a handicap accessible van, there has to be vertical clearance of 98 inches throughout. So the parking garage is too low. So the field's going to be higher anyway. I'll get to that when I submit my written summary for the commission. They dangle the notion in this regulation change of open space because we're all supposed to go, oh, open space, you're a great idea. Open space is defined in your regulations as land preserved in perpetuity for protection of natural resources, natural features, scenic resources, or community character. Is this really, is this field, does anyone equate this with open space? Under permitted principal use structures under the zoning regulations, open space is, under permitted principal uses and structures, the only thing permitted without a permit. Open space, unimproved and undeveloped open space, a pedestrian or bicycle greenway trail, a wildlife sanctuary, flood protection, conservation area, or vacant land retained in a natural and undeveloped condition without structures of any kind. You use that kind of definition for open space. It's difficult to understand then how putting this. Basically, it's a giant garage with a field on the roof at the end of the day. And that's what that, the regulation allows. I don't think that this commission has ever expressed as a planning goal the need for underground or structured parking in residential zones. I don't think this commission ever said, what are we going to tackle this year? Well, let's put parking garages in residential zones. That was never a goal or objective of this commission. Again, the language is vague. It's absurd. It obscures the nature of what's being proposed. It's not consistent with your P O C D. It creates more impermeable surface, elevated bulk. And I don't know why you would treat this structure differently than any other structure because it has a carpet on the roof that you can play sports on. And at the end of the day, and you've been very patient, and I know you can't wait for me to wrap up. But at the end of the day, let's get back to the point of beginning. The school has increased its enrollment beyond the capacity of its campus. And the neighbors should not be bearing the brunt of this. It's out of scale. It's out of character. The school is not hearing its neighbors. It's not hearing this community. I will tell you that there are other definitions in your, in your regulations that deal with building coverage that the applicant didn't even consider that become inconsistent by virtue of your waiving, by virtue of your waiving the, waiving coverage attributable to this structure. At the end of the day, the change creates risk of an overly intense. Well, it will result in an overly intense development on the site. But it creates risk of overly intense development anywhere in town. But where all you have to do, once again, is put a carpet on the roof. And if no one could see it, then it's okay. And that is just not good planning. I know you're familiar with your special permit standards and kind of what you have to find to grant a special permit in this instance. But it starts with, you have to find a compliant site plan. And for the reasons which I will submit, you can't. The site plan is not zoning compliant. And therefore, the special permit cannot be granted. Again, there are violations of the site, on the site. The school has violated the zoning regulations. The school has violated the very carefully crafted conditions that you had put in the earlier special permits. Dr. Kavukjian was good enough to forward to me photos, which are in the record, of light coming off the site. There were restrictions on the school's lighting, exterior lighting, which have not been complied with. And there's no reason for the neighbors to be confident that that's ever going to change. And all this application is going to do is allow the school to continue that curve of increasing enrollment. And at some point, the, this commission has got to say enough. And that's what this community expects from you in, in enforcing the zoning regulations and in granting special permits. Enough. It's just too much. And I would also suggest that the property the school has, if they wanted to create an onsite queue, if they wanted to create an onsite queue without building a parking garage, they could do it. They could find 35 spaces. They found 35 spaces that they haven't shown to you. But they could find 35 spaces and figure out a way to create a queue if they really want to do something good for the community and clear North Wilton Road in the morning. But, you know, actions express intentions. I'm reminded of it all the time. And it is the intention of this school to just grow and ignore its neighbors. So I appreciate your patience. I know this went longer than you had hoped, I am sure. I don't know if my clients have anything to add.
Yeah, I would just. Sorry, I would just add that there's Sarah Pierce for the record. You know, since the beginning, there's just been so much out, like, because we hired Joel, we've been the funnel of questions. And I've just heard this question repeatedly. The community does want to know, why, you know, are, are we aiming to be the first town in Fairfield, Connecticut that allows a structure like this in a residential neighborhood? Because, you know, I've thrown that out there a few times and the applicant hasn't said anything. But this, this doesn't exist elsewhere. You won't find it in Westport. You'll find it in Greenwich. You won't find it in Westport, you'll find it in Greenwich. So that's kind of the last thing that we'd like to say is like, why are we building this here? Who benefits from this project here in New Canaan? And who's going to bat for this project here in New Canaan? Because I, I don't, I don't see who's for this.
This is at best an urban phenomenon. When you're in New York, my daughter lives in Brooklyn, near her apartment in New York. There's a school where the playing field is on the roof. You see it in New York City. It is not customary or reasonable in this setting, in this residential zone, or any residential zone, to create this kind of a structure in this, especially in the context of everything else that has gone on. And I really urge this commission to resist this. It's just, there's so many open questions, and you asked a lot of great ones tonight. There's so many open questions, but at the end of the day, this application just does not begin to meet your standards. And it, it really, it can't be granted. You have discretion on the, you know, on amending your regulations. You, you're acting in a legislative capacity, and you have great discretion, but, and the fair exercise of the discretion vested in this commission, I, joined by my clients, joined by this, this community, I, it's just, it's, it's absurd, the, the regulation that's being proposed. And it's all because the school has increased its enrollment beyond its capacity, the capacity of that site. So again, I really appreciate your patience. I'm happy to answer any questions here.
Commissioners, any questions for the intervenor? I think we're good.
I'll submit that summary.
Yes, please.
And bullet points, and, uh, I'll have that filed by Friday.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thanks again. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Joel.
This is a special meeting, and I know you're all volunteers and doing your best, so thanks for listening.
No problem. So we're still not done yet? Joel, you want, yeah, there you go. So we still have our town engineer, Maria Coplet. That's next on the agenda, correct?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The engineering department reviewed the revisions to the application before the Planning and Zoning Commission for, for 377 North Wilton Road, St. Luke School. As part of our assessment, we evaluated the field on parking structure site permitting set and associated stormwater management report prepared by S M R T Architects and Engineers with latest revisions dated January 8th, 2024, respectively. The latest revisions of these documents submitted by the applicant respond to a December 4th, 2023 comment memo prepared by engineering. Their revised drainage analysis, as presented, demonstrates general compliance with our Town of New Canaan drainage policy. The drainage analysis models that post-developed conditions mimic pre-construction drainage conditions, which are currently disturbed conditions with an existing artificial turf field. Rainfall runoff from the proposed elevated replacement turf field, which is a roof at, for the at-grade parking lot, will be conveyed via roof drains and storm piping to a storm, to a subsurface storm storage system sized to mitigate up to and including the 100-year storm event for peak volume and rate of runoff. Furthermore, the parking lot below the turf field roof will have catch basins to capture runoff from the cars that park there, along with potential wind-blown rainfall. These basins will discharge to a separate subsurface storage system, once passing through an oil-sand interceptor, which is good practice for parking lots. As the stormwater analysis models the surface runoff from the entire roof artificial field area, the secondary system collecting runoff at the at-grade parking level provides additional storage. Water quality volume requirements have been modeled to be met by the oil-sand interceptor and by the surface sand, sand filter. Furthermore, though no credit has been taken as part of the analysis for infiltration, given the depth to groundwater two feet below the stone bottom of the subsurface storage system, and that the outlet orifice of the outlet control structure is higher than the stone base of the system, it is anticipated that groundwater recharge volume will occur. The provided geotechnical borings can be supplemented prior to construction with deep hole tests and percolation testing. As previously stated, engineering finds that the proposed drainage analysis to demonstrate satisfactory compliance with our Town of New Canaan drainage policy. As pertains to the site plan set, the construction logistics plan, C 101, should be expanded to further describe the anticipated sequencing and construction strategy, including, but not limited to, construction staging, trailer location, contractor parking, and material storage. While we understand that, as the applicant states, quote, "When a contractor is brought on board for the project, a detailed construction schedule will be created and coordinated with the town," end quote, an updated plan as previously described is required. At the point when a contractor is on board, the construction logistics plan can be revised accordingly, including detailed documentation pertaining to the removal and disposal of the existing artificial field and infill material. Last week, the applicant provided material specifications for the artificial turf infill mix for the elevated field, proposing to use the, excuse me, proposing the use of the encapsulated virgin coated rubber or the E P D N in its turf applications, consistent with the town applications for our own fields. The applicant should also verify the specifications for their existing turf field. If they are available, and if they are crumb, as has been presented tonight, then our perception would be that there's actually going to be an improvement based on using of, the use of the E T, excuse me, the E P D N over the existing crumb. It's also a reported, reportedly deteriorating existing turf field, which is, have, that it was built in 2006. Available for questions regarding the overall analysis, but anything really specific to the actual design, I would suggest would be directed to the engineer record. Any questions?
This is Krista Nielsen on Zoom. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. I tried to write down what you were saying, but I didn't get it all. But I heard you say water quality volume requirements have been met. Now, we heard a lot tonight about the need for some sort of bio-retention system or a hydrolog, hydro-geological survey to show that there'll be no impacts on surrounding well water. But what I hear you saying is that you don't see the need for that because, in your opinion, the needs, the requirements have been met.
Well, I can't say that I don't see the need for that, but
Okay.
What's under my jurisdiction, which is our town drainage policy and adheres to the Connecticut Stormwater Design Manual, there is no requirements for PFAS or additional pollutant removals. So the testimonies that have been brought before you today is up to the commission to determine whether or not you would want any supplemental, um, supporting stormwater mitigation. Now, as an engineer sitting on this side of the table, I always be pro stormwater mitigation, but as what I have authority to govern under our policy and as part of the Connecticut Stormwater Management Manual, they adhere to the pollutant removal requirements that we have.
Okay, thank you.
And the application that's currently submitted with the stormwater mitigation proposed, does it comply with the state's pollutant removal requirements?
So the way that we have interpreted the, the proposed plans before us, yes, it does. Though, is a question regarding, that was raised by Mr. Trinkus regarding the perimeter sand filter. They have used design that is an interpretation of different methodologies, which we don't have an objection to. And so it does deviate from the guidelines in the Connecticut Stormwater Design Manual. But keep in mind that the amount of impervious area removal where this perimeter sand filter is, is about 1,000 square feet of impervious area. And the treatment area that this perimeter sand filter will take is over 1,800 square feet. So it's a small area that is being, of an, a pervious area that's being removed and impervious area added, but the treatment system proposed is proposed to treat almost double the amount of pervious area that's being removed. So we found that to be satisfactory.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
I have a question.
Yep. Mr. Engel?
Does your department, are, are the standards different if it is a parking lot versus if it's a structure with a roof? For the amount of storm water that needs to be managed or how it's treated? Meaning, the argument we just heard about, it's a structure, not a parking lot, not a surface parking lot, should that be a part of our consideration?
So for us, for our calculations, it's based on curve number. So the material that the rain is hitting. What we find is, is that in this application, because the applicant has a separate storage system for the surface playfield, and then a smaller separate system for the area for wind-blown rain, that they actually have a little bit of additional storage than would typically be modeled on that footprint of disturbance.
Okay. Commissioners, anything further?
Commissioner Turner, could you? It's Commissioner Turner. Could you describe the, what the system is for the playing field as far as the filtration and what, you know, the capacity of it? And is it sand? What, what exactly is it?
So it's actually a containment area. Do you mean where the runoff goes to?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a series of underground storage systems that consistent with what you've seen on other projects, like equal to a cul-de-sac system that sits on a stone base. And what it has is past that actual system is there's an outlet control structure manhole. And in that manhole, there's a weir. So you have your elevation coming in for overflow from that system, and then there's orifices in that weir. And the lowest orifice is set at a higher elevation than both the base of the stone of this large system and the base of the bottom structures. So that's why I was saying that is anticipated that there's also going to be additional infiltration. And one of the things I had said in my testimony is that it is not unprecedented that we allow boring information as part of an application for stormwater management. And it could be supplemented easily when the time is right for more invasive investigations in the deep hole testing and the infiltration testing, which I think would only help support the applicant's conclusions.
Thank you.
Mr. Engel?
But you, you referred to sand filtration for oil earlier. Could you describe that portion of the system?
Sure. That's, that's a contained structure. So that is your typical oil grit separator, but it's a sand infiltration system. And so that removes your oils and those particulates.
On the way into or out of the cul-de-sac like?
Before it goes into the smaller cul-de-sac subsurface storage system. They're not using cul-de-sacs, but it's a common.
And does that sand filtration system, which I'm familiar with it on, most often on swimming pools, right? They have either biotomous earth, or they have sand filters, you know, to filter swimming pools. Is that able to filter zinc or other metals? Or is that just for oil? Or is that for, just for, is, is it only physical filtr, I'm thinking about my swim, my aquarium now. There's physical filtration, and there's chemical filtration. We've heard testimony tonight about nitrates and nitrates. I know that that, we've got to break that down. So are we only talking about sand filtration?
It's typically your oil and grit. There's no plant up there.
Oil and grit.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Do we ever require more than oil and grit for any, any application in this town?
But then it goes, so, so what this is referred to as is your pretreatment before you get to your subsurface storage system as well. And so, and again, there is the anticipation that you're also going to get further infiltration. But mind you, with the way that our, that the drainage analysis works is that the runoff has already been addressed with a system that's at the surface. This is belts and suspenders down below because of the potential of some wind-blown rain or the runoff that can come from a car when you've been in the snow or you've been in the rain and you've come and parked under the garage. But that, that volume is, is not the same as what's going to be coming to your surface of the playing field.
I'm, I'm still not getting it, and maybe I'm just not enough of a chemist, and I'm thinking to my aquarium at home, but I still don't get what, how the system is designed. I understand the sand before it gets into the infiltration system will get, will, is designed to address the motor oils, but I still don't understand, based on the intervenor's testimony, that we don't know what kind of soils we have underneath this. We don't know the quality or amount of infiltration. So I confess, I still don't understand the system.
So would that question be more for the applicant when we eventually hear their rebuttal?
Yeah, I don't know.
That, I mean,
That's up to you.
That, that's fine, because what I'm trying to say is that that system is secondary because what our requirements are for the surface, and that's the playfield. So we pushed forward to the applicant when we were reviewing the design that we wanted additional measures for this area. Because typically, if you're in a closed garage environment, this area would either go to a sanitary sewer or, in this instance, a septic system. But in areas where it's open, like this garage is, and there's the chance of wind-blown rain, we actually suggested to be separate than that. And we've done that, we have precedent with that, so with open systems. But what's happening is, is that the, you're counting water twice. You're counting that drop of rainfall twice because you're counting it on the top surface at the playfield, and you're also counting it again as it comes underneath. So that's why we're saying that it's supplemental storage.
Clear?
As clear as I'll get tonight.
If I may.
Sure.
So the applicant does not claim, and there's no, the system for the upper level, the playing field, is merely for detention of water and distribution of water.
And I stated that they do not take credit for that infiltration.
And there's no treatment at all of the water coming off the roof of the building.
So what I was stating is that because of the fact that the orifice elevation is higher than the base of this, of the stone and the base of the system, that there will be infiltration.
And the bottom of the system is open, correct?
Correct, it's stone.
But we don't know what kind of soil it's sitting in.
So that's what I was saying. So based on the borings that are available in that area, that there is sufficient separation between groundwater and bedrock or any sort of layer that would be impenetrable. And so therefore, we have no objection to, as we get either as part of a building permit application, additional deep hole testing application, additional deep pole testing and percolation testing being a requirement.
And, and when you make that conclusion, you are not making that conclusion in the context of the zoning regulations, is that correct?
I am making it as the town engineer interpreting our town drainage policy.
So to the extent that this commission has to make findings regarding the nature and extent of the project in terms of the quantity of excavation, and you've discussed how you are open to the notion of sort of it being exploratory as the excavation is done, that does not account for the findings that this commission might have to make in terms of the amount of stockpiling, the number of trucks rolling off the site and those kind of findings they have to make on impacts on the neighborhood. That's not your area of inquiry when you look at this, is that correct?
So you're talking about the aspect during the construction logistics plan. And right now, we don't have that information. That's one of the items that I had identified needing additional clarification.
So you're saying though, that the nature and extent of the excavation is something that would become apparent as the project proceeds?
That it would be outlined in a construction logistics plan, correct?
And so the testing would be done, ultimately, the testing would have to be done after the permitting.
So what we typically allow is a condition prior to building permit.
Right.
And, and how would the, so what I'm not understanding is if that condition were imposed, in this case, there's organic material that goes, I think as far as thirty feet underground based on one of the borings showed material pretty deep. How would that go? How would you, as a condition, how would that condition be imposed? And how would that condition be responded to?
So I, I was going to say, I, I, I think that this is something that the actual applicant would better explain, because from what I understand, that based on their footings, that the removals, they'll be able to quantify those answers for you. I cannot.
And in terms of the testimony that was offered by the intervener on the nature and extent of the compounds that come off of turf fields, including virgin rubber and EPDM, you are not offering any conclusions as to the quality of the treatment or the need for treatment to this commission, is that correct?
I am not addressing any of the pollutants that were made in the statement regarding any of the infill material, correct?
And so, and I appreciated your comment that, for example, a swell or drainage swell, more treatment is better, and we all share that, particularly in an area where, I hate to say it, but there are wells. Without opening that up again, but particularly where there's groundwater and people are dependent on wells in the area. All right, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Ms. Copeland, anything further? Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Copeland? Is, talking about the containment system, just looking at the applicant's drawing for the drainage system from the roof structure, not the garage with the reseparators, essentially, you know, a field of cultechs on the south side of the garage. Is, is there an alternative, are there alternative solutions that the state accepts as viable drainage designs that could make that, um, that system more robust? I, I understand that because the, and I forget what you call it, where the invert is higher than the ground level.
Right, right, right. Well, so as Tiger would say, they put man on the moon. So all it takes is a little bit of ingenuity. And yes, there are engineering solutions that would have a variety of options.
Okay. That's all I needed. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Copeland. I think. I'm sorry. Yeah. Commissioners, any, before we go to Mr. Finn, any comments?
Did I just ask a?
Yep.
Commissioner Cassinat, just a matter of, of process at this point. Commissioner Rannan, we can't vote on this because we don't have a conclusion, but right from the wetlands folks?
We have two things.
I'll jump in if you want me.
Go ahead.
Yep, thank you. I'm just trying to.
So this is going to be continued, the applicant gets the final word for every application, so we have not heard any sort of rebuttal to the intervenors from the applicant. But we cannot vote and make a decision until after Wetlands has made a decision. They have thirty less days to vote than we do. So we will have the time to vote.
That was actually a good question. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Finn, are you there?
Yes, I am here. I'm helping, yeah, there's my video. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am here. I, I, I think Ms. Carey stated correctly that we do have the last opportunity to address the commission. I feel confident that we're going to be able to address all the issues that were raised and undo a lot of the confusion that has been generated by the intervener and Attorney Green's presentation. We are waiting to hear from the water company and perhaps the Department of Public Health with their comments. And as of my last contact, they are unlikely going to have those comments available by February twenty-sixth for the Inland Wetlands Commission and February twenty-eighth for your next meeting. So in consultation with Ms. Carey, the decision has been to just postpone any further response until we have that information from the water company, company and hopefully from the Department of Public Health, and that we will resume before you at your next meeting, which I believe is March twenty-sixth. I, I will point out to you that that actually dovetails very well because the Inland Wetlands Commission, we're likely going to do the same thing with the Inland Wetlands Commission for the same reasons. Their next meeting is March eighteenth, and so that will give them an, an opportunity, hopefully, to make their decision and get their, their thoughts and decision to you before you meet on March twenty-sixth.
And Attorney Finn, I just want to clarify for everyone, if that's all right with you, that when he says the water company, he's talking about the first taxing district who owns the group's reservoir, which directly, St. Luke's property flows directly towards.
Yes, that, thank you for that clarification. I should also add, just to make sure we're clear, that the applicant consults, consents to a extension of the time to close the public hearing until and through March twenty-sixth.
Anything else?
I think we should just clarify for the public that we will not be hearing this application at all at next week's meeting, so.
Good point.
There's no need.
Yeah, because of the extension, this will be carried to the March twenty-sixth Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I had a question on the proposed text amendment. I'd like to post to Mr. Finn, if possible.
I would recommend waiting until March, until the March, unless you have any objections, Attorney Finn.
I'm sorry, I had trouble hearing that. Mr. Chris has a question, is that correct?
I'd like to comment on the proposed text amendment, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. I must admit, I have a bit of sympathy for Mr. Green on the wording. I made notes on this before he spoke. The term open space is not defined, and that can be anything from just a roof with black tar on it to something else. I'm not sure what it means. And so I, I'm not sure what role it plays besides it has a feel-good vibe to it. So I'm not sure what role it plays or whether it should be included. Also, towards the end of the sentence, if I may, I'm not sure it's worded as well as it could be. I'm not indicating I would vote for this or against this, but I'm simply wordsmithing. So I don't like the term open space. I think it's superfluous. He said site design and surrounding topography. The way it's written, from a strict constructionist perspective, both conditions, site design and topography, need to exist in order to qualify. I'm not sure that's exactly what you want to do. I think a closer, a better way to state it would be topography, comma, excuse me, site design, comma, surrounding topography, comma, and/or vegetation, since any or all of those in combination could fulfill the goal you seem to be seeking. So you may wish to consider whether the wording is really working for you. That's all I had to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, Mr. Chris, I, I, I understand your second suggestion, and I think it's worth serious consideration, and we will do so. I do have a question about open space. You know, the, the P O C D talks quite a lot about preservation of open space. And while I don't have the, I haven't looked at the P O C D in the last three hours or so, um, I'm, I'm a bit troubled about how, how we could use the term open space in our P O C D and sort of feel comfortable with knowing what that is. And then when we use that word in the context of a zoning regulation, which I, I know you, you're well aware of, is meant to implement the aims and goals of the P O C D, that, that we sort of abandon that word. And so I certainly will take your, you know, think about it and all, but I, I'm not sure exactly what, what you're suggesting there, and I would certainly like to understand that.
Sure. Regarding the term open space, which is not particularly well-defined here, space that's open, so in other words, there's no construction on it, so if you had an open roof, someone might argue that that's open space. I'm not sure I would be on that side of the argument. Does, would a green roof qualify? I could understand how you could get there. I think if you look at the way open space has been defined in some of our regulations, and I believe Mr. Green quoted a few, a bit of that, it, it's really open space is great level land that is unbuilt and contains certain ecological, environmental, or cultural artifacts that we believe to be important. I'm not sure the roof of a building is quite in the same category as that. And so I really don't know what the purpose of open space is, except it has a nice sign to, sound to it. And so just dropping the term really would fulfill the goals you're, you seem to be, your client is looking for, which is to have a one-story parking structure on its property. And the mitigation of, let's call it site impacts, I think could be addressed through the wording that I suggested. I, I think that, I, I think the term open space is a false flag, in my opinion.
I think Mr. Chris's point is you should revisit the language before the, well, it's already submitted, so I don't know how, how we would amend the language at this point since it's part of the application.
Well, I, I, you know, my, my, my understanding is it's certainly that, you know, if there are, you know, sort of changes to a regulation amendment that's been submitted that don't really change in a drastic or significant way, the, the substance of the regulation or the intent of the regulation, that that's, that's certainly something that can be done, you know, during the process.
That's fine.
That's my point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Thank you. Mr. Finn, anything further?
Uh, no, thank you.
Mr. Green?
With, I thought that the hearing was proceeding next Tuesday, but with it not, I could use some additional time to submit my document, if I may.
Oh, the, the summary?
Yeah.
On the deficiency bullets?
Yeah.
That's fine. If you can get it to us within a week or so, that'd be fine.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it?
If you get it to us sooner, we're allowed to put it on our agenda, right? Next week?
We're not.
We're not talking about it at all.
It's not even.
It's now time, we're at, we're at a point where it's time for the applicant to rebut what has just been presented to the commission, and they have requested that they do not want to go forward on the twenty-eighth, so we are not.
Right. Okay. Nothing further. I think we're done with the meeting for tonight. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending. I appreciate the input, appreciate the intervenors.